The microphones pick up everything, so if you are over there and you think you're far enough away, you're not. So if you say something and you want to find out if it made it onto YouTube, it will. That'll be fun. If you are interested in speaking during any part of the visitor citizen forum tonight, and you haven't filled out a speaker card out at the front, please make sure you do so. City secretary can help you with that. And with that, we're going to go ahead and move into our workshop session. Item A, discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. Counsel, if you wouldn't mind pulling up your agendas. Looking at public hearing number one. Funeral home special use permit on I-35. Public hearing number two. Ordinance granting a zone change from local commercial to multifamily three. This is the South Euclid project. Item three, zone change from office district to local commercial and local commercial to planned development and state town hall. Seventeen twenty Edmonds.
Oh yeah, Mayor, we had some updates on the site plan. We, I think, got a betterment at the last minute because of a fence switch. You want to talk about it, Richard?
Yes, one of the alternative standards requested is to allow a wood fence along the public rightway along Edmund's Lane.
Okay.
They are providing a masonry wall along the private driveway on the northern boundary, so we thought we would just switch those and have the masonry wall along the public street and the wood fence along the private drive on the side. That's less visible.
Okay, does that require a change?
That will require a condition to be added by.
By counsel tonight?
Counsel.
Okay.
I did have some questions about the fence because it seemed like in the exhibit that we had, the last two pages were depicting the fence were different than each other. And so I was just having a hard time following it. So I don't know if maybe we just discuss that in more detail up there. So I can get a better. My question was also more along the lines of the between the parking lot and the homes.
The western boundary?
Yeah, one of the exhibits showed that there's fence there and the other one didn't. And so I just.
It is rather confusing. There will be a wood privacy fence along the lot line of the last westernmost homes. Then there's, on the northern side, there is a detention area. It's about 10 feet wide. And then there's the subdivision boundary. That's where they're asking for an alternative standard to allow natural screening in lieu of the wood fence, so you wouldn't have a little 10-foot no man's land.
Okay.
So that's one of the alternative standards that they're asking for, and the staff is in support.
And we can absolutely dig into that if you would like during the conference session.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get in my mind exactly what that's going to look like. But we can talk about it up there.
Anything else on item three? Item four, public hearing, consideration of the. I'll wait.
Oh, hey, I can't wait.
Consideration of the proposed 2023-2024 budget. All right, item E, consent agenda. Minutes for item five. Item six is revised policy statement 2.0, employee performance evaluation compliance. Item six. And that's just adding a couple of the benefits that we've had kind of floating out there as one-offs that need to get added into the documentation tab. You want to.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
State that a little more cleanly than I did.
Oh yeah, that's welcome. It's adding in tool allowance for fleet folks and then just clarifying some language around the other things, as well as allowing for police and fire education and certification pay going forward, which is what we talked about.
Exactly.
During the budget season, so.
Thank you, sir.
I have a quick question about that. Is there any liability incurred or people bringing their own tools to use on our fleet?
This is a common practice, but I'm happy to have Aaron.
Aaron.
Aaron or Jim.
There's no.
The question was, is there any liability related to people bringing their own tools onsite? I know that other cities have done this. And really, I think we make them sign that they know that there's a form we've required them to sign.
Yeah, they have to sign that they're responsible for their tools. This is really very common because it prevents theft of tools and makes it a lot easier to track. And then they get to use the tools that they're more comfortable with. So it's really a more common way to do this.
It's pretty common on the other side, is somebody driving a vehicle with tire faults or somebody using their own tools for that. It's not a deal.
No, it's not.
Typically, typically the tools they're bringing are higher quality than, I mean, they're their own personal fancy tools.
What's wrong with my harbor freight?
I know.
That's nothing, Mayor. I'll have to talk later.
All right, any other questions on that one? Item seven, human resources, section 18, mental health leave for peace officers and telecommunications. Looks like we're adding in our dispatch. Questions? Item eight, corridor improvements with Denton County on I-35 and Main Street and State Highway 121 incorporated. Item nine, Indian Oaks. Long time coming. Decided for that one. Item 10, professional services agreement with Burkhoff, Hendricks, and Carter. Water intake structure. Item 11, professional services agreement between the city and Trainer HL for preservation planning on the minor quarter log cabin and structures over at Lilo.
That's long time coming, too. I'm excited about that.
Item 12, professional services with Fries and Nichols.
I have a quick question about that. This is just out of curiosity, my analysis. Does it mention a street furniture? And I know that's like mailbox and stuff, but what other things are called a street furniture?
Benches.
Benches, okay.
It's like literal furniture.
Yeah.
Kind of street tacos.
Could include the recycled bins, recycled stuff.
Basically, any kind of infrastructure, the city knows that. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very excited to see this.
Item 13, economic development agreement between Denton County Holdings and the city.
So thirteen also?
No.
Oh, the wrong one.
So thirteen.
Next, for the next.
Fourteen had me confused.
Thirteen, I had a question because I read the text multiple times and I had a hard time when we're talking about the process for the reimbursement of the facade grant. I'm not following what's happening there. I understand that it needs to be paid back, but I'm not following when and how that's happening.
I'm right here.
So in the First Amendment, it stated that either they would, that they had to send instructions to their closing company and then from there, oh, sorry, for the title company, and then from there, they would have to either pay it to us within five days of closing, so they could pay before or after. But now they just want to, they've already sent us a check in the mail. They just want to pay us before closing so that it's all said and done before they close.
Okay, they want to do it faster than that.
Yes, they want to do it faster. It's just not in line with how it was executed.
Okay, great.
Item fourteen.
We'll have to pull fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen and fifteen need to be pulled.
And sixteen.
And sixteen.
Well, sixteen.
Why? We don't have to pull sixteen.
Yeah, no.
But, you know, how well do we really know this guy? To know that name is something like that. Seriously.
So fourteen and fifteen are both the TRIP, or as I like to call it, ELAP program, going into the Wayback Machine. So those are, and just as a reminder, DCTA has a policy that if there is excess revenues, over budgeted, then a percentage of that is set aside and reimbursed to the municipalities proportionally. So in years that we have, you know, larger sales tax returns than budgeted, the city gets the opportunity to do trails or other infrastructure that is adjacent to transit. So that's what TRIP is doing here.
So and just for, just for clarification, we submit an application for a project. They approve the funds for it, and then it comes back to us, which is what, I didn't realize we had to them approve it.
It's just the agreement. So the agreement sets out the rules of reimbursements as well as reporting structure and things like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so that's fourteen and fifteen. Sixteen, we are being requested to request a letter that then requests a letter to appoint Councilmember Jones to the National League of Cities. What is that? Chairman this year, awesome. That's for the Finance Administration, Intergovernmental Relations Committee. I think most of us here don't have an issue with that.
Why didn't you look at me when you said, when you said that? Why didn't you look at me?
No, Brandon's done a great job representing the city at the national level in this. I don't have any issues with asking for recommendation. I'm assuming I'm going to speak for counsel on that one.
You can make a blush a little bit.
Yeah, you know, every once in a while. He does an amazing job. I appreciate him out there doing that. All right, that's sixteen. Seventeen, approval of appointing Kristi Gomez to the city of Louisville, large employer position on the Arts Advisory Board.
Long time coming. That's going to be the thing tonight.
That'll be the thing tonight. So yeah, we got that one done, so excellent. And then we'll move back into regular hearings. Item eighteen, consideration of ordinance adopting a fiscal year 23-24 operating budget. So that's the ordinance. And that is the agenda. Any questions before we move into item B of the workshop? Item B, discussion of the creation of an ambassador program designed to educate and engage the public on city Louisville matters. And we have Mr. James Kunkie, our Director of Community Relations and Tourism, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So we want to present to you this evening a program that we've been working with for about six months to try and come up with a plan. Started with discussions with the Louisville 2025 Steering Committee and seeing how they're all involved through the years. And especially looking at ways that we can continue to boost education, awareness, and buy-in with Louisville residents. Sure, a quick aside, I attended a national conference this past week of communicators from around the country, and there were three different sessions that I attended in which the presenter said, and really, if you can find a way to create ambassadors in your community, you should do that. I can teach this class, which we'll know after tonight. So this is the background I just told you about. The main thing here is we saw Louisville 2025 Steering Committee when it started was made up of people who had served on the Louisville 2025 committees in 2014 when that plan was being developed. And early on, they were providing input as we prioritize and knocked off things on the plan, got things done, continue to move forward. We anticipated there might be times when we'd come to them and say, what about this? Should this be adjusted? Should we make a change here? Now, two things happened during the next five years. One is, as new members, well, as members roll onto city council, all the other boards are moved out of the community, and we had to replace them, there were fewer and fewer people available who had served on those development committees. So we started having people on the steering committee who had not been directly involved in creating the Louisville 2025 Vision Plan. We also saw that we did the touchpoint process in 2019 to, through 2020, to update the plan and did a whole lot of the updating that the committee had been advising on previously. So we reached the point in 2021, looking back at 2122, where the committee was really not serving the same function it had been before, but we still asked people who are very eager to learn about and advocate on behalf of the city of Louisville. But there also are other groups out there that can do some similar activities. So we tried to think of a broader way to really build these brand ambassadors in the community, people who can know what they're talking about, who can answer questions. If they see something on social media, hear something at the grocery store, and they know that's not right, they feel confident enough and educated enough to speak up and say, wait a minute, you're a little bit off on that. So here are our target objectives. I'm not going to read all of them to you, but the probably most important one is that very first one. We want our community to be engaged and informed. Residents who are informed and engaged, who know what's going on and feel like they are a part of the process, are much more likely to support the efforts of the city, to understand what the objective is, to see the big picture, and be prepared to take a very active vocal role in pushing forward plans that if they didn't understand them, didn't know they were coming, they might have been a little bit more skeptical, a little bit more resistant, too. And also, the fourth bullet down, we want to engage with parts of the community that are currently under-engaged. We've been trying this for years. We've had some success in some areas. We've rolled out some elements of a multifamily engagement program, and we're seeing some early success there, but there's a lot more to be done. And there's other parts of our community that historically we have not been able to reach as well, or they have not chosen to engage with us as often. We think here's another chance to try and improve that and build those lines of communication. To start off, we see this as being an invitation-only process because this isn't a city 101 program, if you will. This is not where you go to learn what the city of Louisville is and what it does. This is where you go, it's kind of advanced studies. You've already completed Citizens University or some other program, you know a lot of what's going on, here's a little bit more of advanced study, more detailed look on some of those topics. So we would really try to start the program by targeting those individuals and bringing them in, knowing that the intent is to continue to grow those feeder programs and to grow this program over time. Maybe one day we have 125,000 ambassadors, that'd be great. The meetings will be very unwieldy, but it'd be nice to have that much support. And then you see, again, we're trying to reach all those historically underrepresented populations. We know they're out there. We want to make sure everybody feels like they have a voice and their voice will be heard, and we will respond to their voice. Looking at two to four meetings a year, this is not today in monthly expectation or weekly expectation. This would be two to four times a year. We would gather these groups for an evening activity, and we would go to them with information about a current project that is of significant importance but has a lot of complexity to it, and also to receive their input on those. And there might be times when they bring forward a topic that they're hearing come up in communication among their neighbors and friends, and they want to know what the city is doing on a topic or what they can offer on behalf of the city. So they'd be able to bring those topics to us also. And the key here is looking not just for, we don't want to be a simple reporting structure where we go in and we have a PowerPoint with eight topics and four slides per topic, and you hit a few bullet points, and they leave thinking, I already knew half of that, I could have spent my time better. We want it to be something that is worth their investment of time and that respects the investment of time they've made to get to this point. So we want to find topics that have a little more depth to them, things that have a surface understanding and a deeper understanding, want to get them to that deeper understanding where they can truly be advocates, and frankly, where they can ask us questions or challenge our assumptions that maybe we've overlooked previously. So just basically for the participants, we want it to be a respectful, a welcoming, an open atmosphere, not a political atmosphere, one where everybody has a chance to speak, where it is two-way, they're talking to us, we're talking to them. Because again, the intent here is to educate and engage our population, not to in any way divide or alienate the population. So we would start with these five groups that you see listed. First, current board and commission members. By serving on a board or commission, you gain an education, even if it's only that one subject. You might become a subject expert on animal services or on zoning or on CDVG, and you've shown a willingness to commit the time and effort to do that. Graduates of Citizens University Program, we've now had a number of those classes go through, and many of them are serving on boards, commissions, or even on this council. There's others that are out in the community and serving in other ways. We want to get them in there because they do have that basic understanding. Members of the former mayor's commission listen, learn, lead, looking at ones that live in Louisville, which was about a little more than half of those. Members of the former Castle Hills Ambassadors Group, what's interesting is much of that group is now serving on boards and commissions, so they're already on the list.
Patrick, were you on that list? You're on several lists.
We do start many lists with Councilman Alex May, but that's another topic. But get those, there are still a few members of that ambassadors group from Castle Hills that are not currently serving in an unofficial capacity. We want to keep them educated. They spend a lot of time learning about city operations and helping us have what I would think is a, as smooth an anticipation process as you could ever possibly have hoped. And then, this is a little bit harder because we have to try and find them, but alumni of the Louisville Youth Action Council Program. We had one of our Youth Action Council Program alumni recently was the keynote speaker at Denton's Juneteenth Celebration. We'd love to bring him back in here. We have another that we've recently brought on board to help plan the dedication ceremony for the chin sculpture of Central Park. So some of these students are now young adults, and they are still leading their communities in various ways. We want to keep their voice in there. And we would personally invite these individuals, probably not all from me, they don't all know me, be people that they know, so they'd understand it's a personal invitation, we're not just sending a mass email. In addition, if there's other residents who express an interest in the program, we consider them for invitation also. For the most part, people who want to put in that time and that commitment already are in one of those groups, but it's possible we've missed somebody. We didn't put former council or former mayors on there, but certainly if a former council or former mayor wants to serve and lives in Louisville, we would welcome them. We just didn't put them on the list because they're really involved in so many things already. But we would, we would want to make sure that people that come in have a basic understanding of how we operate and who we are and are looking for that additional knowledge and education. We don't have a name. You'll notice that, I think it said Louisville Ambassadors Academy. We've talked about a dozen different names. I don't remember if I put that next slide in or not. Name's going to be important. We want to have a name that describes the objectives, but also doesn't make the rest of the public think these are official representatives of the city, that they speak for the city. They won't, we aren't speaking on behalf. We don't want to speak as if they have the authority of the city behind them because that's not the role. So we're going to spend some time figuring out exactly what to call it, but not a lot of time, ready to roll this out fairly quickly if counsel is supportive of the concept. So here's some names that have been thrown out there as possibilities. Some are pretty good, some maybe not as good, but I just listed them all. There's Ambassador's Academy, number three. Can we get away from that generic naming about halfway down, go with Louisville Plus, Louisville Advantage? Might sound more like a Medicaid, Medicare plan.
I know.
Yeah.
Engage Louisville. So we're looking at a variety of them. If there's one that somebody likes, point it out to me. And if we missed on, if there's a great one out there we missed, this has not been chosen yet, but it'll be chosen probably fairly quickly if we move forward. The meetings themselves, if you, if you went to the touchpoint meetings for the update to the Louisville 2025 Vision Plan, it would very much follow that format. It would start with visual displays. Prior to the meeting, set up visual displays, say, in the lobby of the Louisville Grand Theater, or the lobby of City Hall, or wherever we happen to have the meeting. And set up visual displays at least 30 minutes prior, and then you'd have them begin after the meeting. And they would provide some of the details and background information for the topic or topics that are being planned. For example, if we were talking about drainage utility, David, you're in my line of sight, so you win. If we're talking about drainage utility for some reason, we would have information up there about major drainage projects and how a utility project, how utility funding works and things like that. And ideally, you would have city staff or a suitable commission member, board member, standing at each one to answer questions that people might have. So informed guidance at those boards. And in some cases, a sticky note feedback board would be useful also. So you get people thinking early what kind of feedback they want to give. If we do that, we'd have one before and one after, because you'll notice feedback often will change when people get more education. Then there's the meeting, the formal presentation. These would be slides, we'd be narrating it, keep them fairly quick. You'll see we just estimated less than 30 minutes, ideally about 10 minutes, because you get past that, people just get bored. Attention spans are not what they used to be. I'm sorry, I lost track of my place. This also is a chance for, once you do the presentation, for participants to ask questions of staff or whoever's presenting, and for staff to ask questions back. And part of the question there, if we're going to take that topic to the general public, for example, if we're going to the councils of the committee, going to the community with a charter election, we can then say, okay, you've heard what we're trying to accomplish, what we're trying to do, we communicated it to you, is that the best way to communicate to the public? What other things would you suggest? What ideas do you have? And we would want to get presentations, a copy of the presentations to the participants after the meeting, not during, because then they will read and not listen. Q and A session. If there's questions they have that we didn't address, this is the time to ask them, you got a captive audience? And then, oh, I did add in here, this specifically referring to the bond election, you'll see is one of the topics we talked about, the results from the Blue Ribbon, the recommendations from Blue Ribbon Committee. We're going to want to take those out for public engagement meetings anyway. So a meeting with the ambassadors group, whatever their name is, could kind of be our dress rehearsal. We try it out with them, they are a receptive audience, an educated audience, and then afterwards, they can tell us how to do it better. So.
It's like a mock trial.
In a way, in a way, except hopefully no one being convicted of anything. So, and then, of course, I mentioned the displays back out after. Here's where we are now. We could, we could start this as soon as everybody says, yes, we think it's a good idea, or it's a good idea with a couple of minor adjustments. We do need to go with a name, that would become a priority. The Blue Ribbon Process, we think, is a great opportunity to launch this. It's something we have to do a lot of education on anyway, and far beyond this group. But this group, because they know areas, the Parks Board knows about parks, and they know the parks' needs, and if parks' needs happen to be on the ballot, they're going to have the ammunition to go up there and educate and talk about things and honestly say things we couldn't. So we see it as a good opportunity to engage, and then after we've had that meeting, see how it goes, then we have open the whole public meetings, probably in October. Other topics that we've thrown out there as possibilities, the Old Town TOD project, again, something that on the surface, oh, we're trying to build, okay, great, but there's a whole lot more detail. And if you have an understanding of how the city functions and how we, our vision for Old Town and how we do the development process, it will help to get to those details. And then, once we've provided those details, they can help us educate the public. The 121 Business Corridor Plan, Louisville Lake Park Reimagining, which is going to be a very big project with a whole lot of emotional attachment to it, and we're hoping here to avoid emotional attachment to the extent that we can. Again, we want this to be an engagement process, not a reporting process. We're not just trying to read off a bunch of slides, say, thank you for coming, grab a cookie on the way out. We want them to feel engaged and involved, and frankly, have homework when they leave to share that with their neighbors, family, and friends. And so that is a very quick, especially for me, presentation, and I'd be happy to field any questions or input that counsel might have.
I think that's a great idea. Just to clarify, we're talking about replacing the Louisville 2025 committee with this.
The committee would stop meeting, but I believe the committee would still exist.
I think we put the committee on hold until this program can be developed, with the idea that the 2025 committee kind of becomes this. So we basically put 2025 on steroids, add more people. We run it exactly the same way, but more, less PowerPoint, more engagement and input.
Is there a specific number of people that we're kind of thinking is the sweet spot?
So I've been looking at the groups we're inviting. If we had 40 people show up, that would be a great number. It's a manageable number, it fills the space without overfilling the space, and gives you a lot of voices out there. Honestly, it's Lou and McGamble. We might wind up with 15 people one time, and if certain topics, you might wind up with 70 that show up. But the invitation group is going to be somewhere in the range of 60 people, and if we can get two-thirds of them to participate, that'd be very successful.
That's why, that's also why it's important to do the boards around the room, because it can become unwieldy if you're just having open discussion, where one person could monopolize an entire room. So this is really to help kind of facilitate that, and my notes will learn along the way.
Okay.
I think we're going to have to be a little bit careful, though, because there are some out there that would jump on this bandwagon right here, would love to be for their own self, their own agendas.
You'll have to be heavily moderate.
Right.
Absolutely.
So for that reason, I was, I was kind of thinking, is there any thought about maybe kind of starting with a little bit of a smaller group and then expand it from there, just to kind of like work out some of the kinks?
In a way, the Louisville 2025 committee has been the testing ground for that.
Right.
That's fair, okay. I think y'all feel like y'all ready to go. It's good, go.
Sounds good to me.
I'll second that.
No voting. But you have consent.
As a metaphor.
I'm definitely for if, so if somebody doesn't show up for sort of that meetings, does that?
These would not be council appointments, therefore there's no required attendance. If they show up one time out of four, they're well-educated on one out of four. We prefer four out of four, of course.
So really not as formal as a committee or a board, but a way to help those folks kind of get that next level of engagement and interest.
It's a volunteer group as opposed to, of course, board members are volunteers, but they are appointed and they have certain charter established, or in some cases statute established requirements. This is not that level of formality.
We will, though, have to probably post a possible forum if the board members all show up there.
Yes.
For the, maybe rogue person out there that is doing this solely for their own private benefits to further advance themselves for whatever reason, is there going to be an is there going to be an avenue in which there is a removal of that person if they go completely crazy?
Since there's not an appointment, a point to know for removal is quite the right word. Disinvitation might be something.
Yeah.
I was also.
What does that look like?
I was volunteering you for that.
Who gets to give the disinvite?
I was going to volunteer you.
No, it won't be.
I'm hopeful because we've not encountered that issue very often.
Right, but we have encountered it.
We have encountered it and we've been able to, to steer through it. Honestly, I don't have a firm plan in mind if one person is trying to do that, except that whoever is moderating, which might fall to me on some of those, would you have to make sure you start steering the conversation to someone else?
Absolutely.
And then you have someone speak to that person afterward and say, you can't disrupt. You can't be doing that.
And in my experience, those types of folks tend to self-weed because you've got, let's pick forty. You've got thirty-nine other people that are.
Right.
Probably pretty strong-willed folks, probably pretty engaged.
There would be some self-policing.
Yeah.
People who are there and take it seriously and want to learn more are probably going to talk down to the person that is not. And when they don't feel welcome, hopefully they would self-disinvite and make up another new word.
I, I like the idea. I think, I think it's interesting.
Yeah, I do too.
So it might be a great way for us to get volunteers for events and those types of things as well.
You guys have any feelings about the names? Any strong feelings?
Yeah, the word Federation needs to be in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
I hear the first disinvitation.
Oh, yeah.
I do like Engage Lewisville.
Engage Lewisville, okay.
I, I like the present tense, I think, and not the past tense.
Oh, and they can name themselves.
Yeah, I think that's some ownership in the process.
Oh, yeah, the, the, what was the group, what was the group with the Lewisville Ribbons? What did they call that?
That was the Boosters.
Lewisville Boosters?
Lewisville Boosters.
No, we don't like the Lewisville.
It just makes it sound like it's the high school.
Cheerleading and pom-pom.
That's fair.
We love our high school, but what they do is different.
That's fair. I would think that they would maybe want to look at this and decide on the name themselves.
I would, I would vote against Lewisville Advantage because that does sound like something that.
It does.
Sure.
Yeah. All the sixty-two plus mailings.
Yeah, Lewisville Plus sounds like a, that's, that's a, that's a new on-demand TV channel that we.
More battery store.
I'm going to do office. And so Chris McGinn.
I think we're in good shape.
I like this. Good job.
Awesome. So Thomas, I think we have some public comment for this next one, is that right?
Yes, sir, we have.
Do you mind handing me those or I'll get them while Chris says something?
Would it be better to move this part of the workshop?
No, we've got a fairly limited group, so I'm not too worried about it. So, Mr. McGinn, I think what I want to do here today is, we do have some public comments on this one. So what I, what I'd ask is for the folks, when I call them, if they'd like to say a few words, we're just going to do that here. That way we can kind of have those ideas out there on the table to think about. And then we're going to go through your presentation, which of course has been staff's first pass at this topic. At which point, at the end of that, no decisions per se are going to be made tonight. What we are going to be doing is giving staff direction on where council feels we need to be looking or going in regards to short-term rentals in Lewisville. Typically, depending on what we, what we come up with, that typically results, if we decide to move forward, in more opportunities for public comment and, and more dialogue on this. So don't think that this is a one and done for anybody who's here in the room. I don't want to create that. But this is for us to get our heads wrapped around what staff has been able to, to find out about what's going on with short-term rentals in the area. So with that kind of structure, clarity.
Is there a time, is there a time limit for speakers or?
There, there is, since it says here, and this is, we don't do this very often, guys, so bear with me on this one. It does say ten minutes for proponents, five minutes for rebuttal, ten minutes for opposition. This is not a debate. So I'd ask if everybody could kind of keep it within three minutes, just to be cognizant of everybody's time. I do have to, at seven o'clock, I will have to stop this, go in there and start that meeting and then come back to this if we're, if we go over. So I, I'd ask everybody to be real cognizant of time. And if, if somebody has gone and said your thing, it is perfectly fine to say, I second what they just said. I, if, if you don't mind. But again, this is your room. This is your opportunity to speak, so I don't want to curtail you from any of that.
And that would be after the presentation?
No, I'm going to do all the public comments before the presentation.
Before, okay.
So, just so we have that. And if you don't mind, I'm going to just start here with Mr. Jim Hughes. Mr. Hughes, I've got you at 1018 Forest Park Drive here in Lewisville.
Yes.
And you are here to speak in opposition?
Yes.
So, sir?
Okay, I live, I come out my driveway and with a five-house span, there's three Airbnb, Airbnbs. One of them advertises for twenty-plus people, guests. The one next door advertises for fourteen-plus. Every trash day, they bring out the trash. We're by the lake, so animals tear it all up. And I come out my door and there's trash everywhere. And until the cleanup crew of the, these people come out and finally clean it all up, that's what we have to look at constantly. That's one of, three things that I don't like is the traffic, the trash and the parking and so traffic and all that. But parking is horrible. Sometimes I've counted sixteen cars around my cul-de-sac when I go out my driveway. Sixteen cars around and about.
And this is a cul-de-sac?
And this is, I live on the cul-de-sac. I have a, on my, on my property, I have a lift station, the City of Lewisville Lift Station. And sometimes there's a car parked right there in front of that lift station. If there's ever a sewer problem, public workers are going to have to go find, if they're gone somewhere, out on amusement somewhere, that could be an issue too. So anyway, that's all I got to say. Traffic, trash and all the people everywhere, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Appreciate that. Craig Mulkey?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. I've got you at 1005 Forest Park.
Great.
And I agree exactly with what Jim has said. You're also going to find the issues are, as in the folks, is the noise itself. We all take great pride, quite honestly, in the neighborhood that we moved into. And that's the reason we moved into it because, once again, it was nice, quiet, little neighborhood. And it is no longer so. I meant the noise, the number of people, the traffic and so forth. So again, I'm just reemphasizing what Jim has said and again, the other issues that I brought up, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you. Ansley Shelling, 1001 Forest Park Drive?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm not a speaker, so I'm a jury. Please forgive me. I'm a little shaky too.
You're all good. We're all friends here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and other attendees. My name is Ansley Shelling. I live at 1001 Forest Park Drive in the Park Place neighborhood at the end of North Mill Street. And you've just heard from my neighbors. In the past two years, three short-term rentals have opened up shop on Clearview Court. This comprises fifteen percent of our neighborhood. The effects have been influx of noise, traffic, speeding, trash and just strangers everywhere. Our quiet streets are no longer a peaceful and serene place to live. I'm also co-founder of the Lewisville Chapter of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition. And our goal is to prevent short-term rentals from ruining our neighborhoods by working with other chapters and local government. I want to call attention to two emails I sent to city staff on Saturday evening and this morning. I will not waste anyone's time by rehashing those emails. But in summary, current residential zoning districts do not allow hotels. And the Texas tax code in the final page of the upcoming workshop presentation allude that short-term rentals are just that, hotels. Thus, we feel Lewisville is in a prime position to follow most recently Dallas's ban on short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods. This black and white approach leaves little to no loopholes or gray areas open to interpretation. Gray areas have opened up cities such as Austin to prime targets for litigation from short-term rental owners. In response to the city's upcoming recommendation on a registration system and accompanying hotel tax, I want to call attention to Denton's short-term registration failures. Since their deployment four years ago, there has been approximately three percent compliance. I went to the town hall for their short-term rentals and asked them why the low registration numbers. And their response was, we are in the business of compliance, not enforcement. Needless to say, without enforcement, there will be little to no compliance. And I want to know, is Lewisville ready to enforce monitored compliance of a registration system? Because I know you do not want to place that burden on your residents. In conclusion, I want each of you to think, if you had a short-term rental next to you, how would you feel? And if you say you're unsure, please ask my neighbors on Clearview Court or the residents of Indian Oaks. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? When did y'all form this coalition?
Two months ago.
Two months ago.
Yes, ma'am. The coalition has been around since 2017. The Lewisville Chapter started two months ago. Let me clarify.
Okay.
Thank you. Jeff Woods, 1001 Forest Park? And you're here to speak in opposition as well?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Woods. I have been a lifelong resident of Lewisville for fifty-six years, as well as some of the other people standing in this room that we live in the same neighborhood. And what was once known as a quiet and peaceful neighborhood is that no longer. This didn't really bring an awareness to me, STRs, until I started to look at all the negative impacts, not only in the cities around Texas, but nationwide. The same type of problems and issues follow every single city that hosts, allows STRs within their city limits. And it's, it's unfathomable, the horror stories that come with it. I am not someone that is opposed to capitalism. I'm not someone that is opposed to, you know, somebody having a business, but not at the expense of others. Not at the expense of our serenity and our peace and tranquility that we had in our neighborhood, which is now, like she said, three, we have three STRs in our neighborhood. And what has come with that is people that live in fear. And when I say that is because you have people that are coming twenty, sixteen and eight and ten is what the occupancy is. And that's another topic, of course, of how they can have, have that many people in a single-dowelling home. But when I spoke to others in the neighborhood, the majority of the people in my neighborhood were fifty-five plus. But when I, when I spoke to other areas in Lewisville about STRs being in their neighborhood, their biggest concern was that they have kids. And there is no way to have a background check on who's coming to stay in these STRs. It'd be the person that's renting the STR possibly on a, on a weekend basis. But who's going to, what's going to attract? And of course, we live at the lake, so we know that the lake might, and they all have pools and they all back up to the lake, these STRs, that it does attract a party. And so other things that I have found, that I have, what really brought my attention was to that, you know, it is, the, the people that own the STRs, they're not, they're not, a lot of them are not local. This is just an investment into the, this is a, an investment into the homes. It's not an investment into the community. They only care about the profit that's made from that. What Airbnb started out to be was, it was for you to share your home. It was for the homeowner to say, I have a room if you would like to rent it. It has now evolved into whole house, here's the key, don't park in the neighbor's yard. And with it, it is something that we are at their, at their profit is at our expense. And it's, it's not just a one weekend, it's every weekend. It's not, you know, it's during the week. It's, you know, with three houses right there. So, and what a lot of people that I've spoke to that were close to STRs is because of the children, you know, who's coming in, you know? And that's the same thing. I can sit in my house and look down our street. I can look out to the street and see the different cars that are going up and down the street. And I don't recognize the cars where I used to recognize the cars. What I've been hearing here from everything in town council is this, that we want to bring the community of Lewisville together. Everything that was just in, talking about the ambassador program, we want to bring the city of Lewisville together. And me being here for fifty-six years, I have seen it. And I commend you all for the job that you have done. But.
Would it be all right if I go ahead and let the next person come on?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you, sir.
Three minutes, my three minutes is up.
Mr. Woods, what was your address again?
1001 Forest Park Drive.
I'll follow him. Thank you, sir. Appreciate, appreciate the content. I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to manage.
No, I, I agree. Thank you.
Next up, Russell Curvo, 2329 Clearview Court, in opposition of STRs?
Yes, sir. I agree with everything that's been said so far. I would bring up one other point that, you know, because they are akin to a hotel motel with the, you know, the low frequency of stay that people might be staying near, they're going to bring in the same kind of crime homes that we have seen historically in the city of Lewisville at our other hotels and motels and extended state places. Sex trafficking, drugs. We don't want that in this neighborhood. I said it was a quiet place. Half the time you can tell somebody where you live and they go, where is that? They don't even know where we exist. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Laura Strink?
Here. Thank you for listening to us. I'm in opposition also, mostly with what everybody else has already said. But I will say that I do have a special needs adult that lives in the neighborhood. And I like to be able to let her go outside and sit outside and things. The traffic is quite a bit and I'm right at the corner, so I get to see everything that's coming in and out. And I don't know who these people are that are coming in and out. I used to be able to say who was coming in and out and I have no idea now.
And you all are all in the same tiny neighborhood.
There's twenty houses in our neighborhood.
One way in, one way out. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And those reviews of work. Make me do that one for us. All right.
It's not the agenda.
See you next week.
Russ sees me a rotary, it will be fine. And my apologies, Wahin Morales?
That's me.
Thank you, sir. 1325 Cedar Ridge?
Yes.
And love, love your input, please, sir.
Oh, for sure. So guys, I'm pretty sure I'm like the black sheep in the room right now. I'm an owner-operator of short-term rentals. I actually agree with every, with what these guys have said when it comes down to regulations. What I've seen, and this is me with the, being on the inside, is that people who don't live in the community, by the way, I live here in Lewisville off 407 and, uh, Garden Bridge. The ones who are having problems, he's right, are the ones who aren't owner-operators. If you guys want to find a solution to the STRs, it's limit the people who can rent them out. The people who only care about their actual rentals are the people who actually own the property. If I was just someone renting out a home, I'd probably trash it out. I'm a kid, right? I might do that. But because I spent my hard-earned money on that home, I'm going to cherish it with everything I have. Not only that, I do want to make something very clear. STRs, what I've done, I, I teach people how to run it proper, ethical STRs. Majority of people that I'm actually teaching how to run these STRs are actually people of age, in their seventies, in their sixties, ready to retire. And they realize that their pension can't take them that far. So they realize and said, hey, if I rent out my property and if I just move into somewhere smaller, I actually might be able to survive and continue to flourish in my golden years. Now, some people in this room might disagree with that and say, oh, I don't like it because I don't know my neighborhood. I hate to say it, unfortunately, I lived in the same neighborhood I've been for the past five years, I still don't know my neighbors. When it comes to crime and stuff like that, the officers in the back can tell you, unfortunately, crime is just human nature. It just cannot be solved, it just has to be, you know, put out fires, I'm assuming, one by one. I'm here, I hope the council would take regulation in the fact of proper parking, proper occupancy, right? Can't put twenty people in a two-bedroom home, right? Hey, you can't have six cars on a cul-de-sac. I agree with you guys on that, trust me, I really do. But regulating, completely eliminating STRs completely, you're not only hurting the owner-operator, but you're hurting others that I, we also employ, cleaning staff, maintenance staff. We are our own little economy, that opportunities that people didn't have. And especially for the people that you guys might, might think and see, hey, this guy's young, this, that's all the people who use STRs? No, guys, there's a growing population of people who own their home outright, just can't afford to live there anymore. And that's the growing population that I'm seeing on the STR platform, who use their home to live out their golden years. So, not only are you gonna hurt the youth, but you're also hurting the demographic of people who, I hate to say it, will rely to, into their golden years.
Thank you, Mr. Morales, appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
And George, George, I'm sorry, Stagney?
No, it's okay, don't worry.
My apologies, sir.
No, I, I agree with everybody. I mean, it's something we, I feel we need to address. I live right across the street, or actually, it's on all my neighbors. I see them ten times a day, or maybe once a day.
We know each other.
We know each other, but we're getting a lot of people going through, they're going down a road that's only a block long, and they're doing fifty or sixty mile an hour before they get to the end. It's more than they can make the cul-de-sac, you know, things like that, it's, and they don't live there now, whether they're just somebody that's looking for a street, they did the wrong turn, or whether they're due to the, you know, STR that, you know, I have no way of knowing that, but the traffic's just really, really increased exponentially. It's, it's just a concern, again, my wife, especially his daughter, that we'd like to go out, has been going outside, and said we've set up a little area, you know, for her to be in, and she would be treating, and we're afraid to do that now, because we have to, before, we didn't have to be with her, she's high functioning, but there was some, always some concern. But now, it's, we always go out and be there because of her, we should, sometimes she still goes out and we don't know it, but we try to make sure that we're there when we can, we're now concerned, we weren't before.
Thank you, appreciate your input, sir. All right. Thank you all, and please continue to send emails, we have four of them here that we received as well, that all the council has on file. Please continue to send your information. Please continue to report violations. I mean, those are violations regardless of ownership.
Can I ask Mr. Morales something?
We're running a real long time, so, that's, so, that, those are the tools we have in our toolbox right now, so, Mr. McGinn, if you would like to get us some information?
Before we start, Eric, keep it really short. So, veteran residents a couple of times, you know, people who operate, I'm gonna urge the council, when you get an email from somebody that says, I'm a Louisville resident, check them out, because I've gotten two emails, and you guys probably have as well, one of them was not a resident. They claimed to be a resident, they wanted to know that, so I checked that out, they didn't live where they said they lived. And then two, Steve was also taking a homestand exemption, which he should be taking as well. It doesn't affect us and the city, because we don't have homestand exemption, but just beware that people always represent themselves correctly, as we receive. I guess, you're right, it depends, but you're right, you're right.
If they're claiming that they live there and they don't...
There's a few of those on the list that Ansley has just provided, but, but anyway, just to keep that in mind. Two, I did also go through, and I've been through this neighborhood, I went Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, just to see what I could see. And first off, congratulations, every house over there has a sign up regarding this concern, so I've never seen a beautiful neighborhood like that, one. And two, I saw firsthand the trash problem. There's one house in particular, overflowing trash, spread out across, across the driveway, it was embarrassing to look at. I didn't see a boy, I didn't see a lot of car, but I did see the trash problem, and that does want to see better.
Thank you.
Chris? I was gonna say that I appreciate the comments of the residents, I think that helps us understand the situation. In addition, thank you to staff, my business analyst, finance, I T S, police department, for helping us gather the data necessary to kind of come up with this presentation information. This is a revisit of some of the data that we discussed back in 2020 at the city council retreat, taking a look at STRs that we currently have. We utilize a software called Host Compliance. They comb through, there's actually about a hundred different sites that you can post a short-term rental on. They utilize, I think, seventy-four to identify short-term rentals. These are the ones that we positively have identified the address, so just keep in mind that there are additional short-term rentals that are out there that Host Compliance wasn't quite able to match up to, to get a positive address. When we looked at the data in July, we came up with ninety-three unique short-term rentals that they were renting out the, the entire, the entire home. In addition to that, there are also, were eleven homes that were identified where they are renting a room. And so, just, just to keep that in mind, when we're looking at the data, I think surprisingly, there's the increase that we saw from March 2022 to July 2023 was, was a forty-one percent increase during that time period. And so, you know, we're seeing these short-term rentals increase specifically after the pandemic, and we believe that things are continuing to, to trend, showing an increase. There's a couple of different types of rentals. For the purpose of this discussion, we were really looking at locations that were renting out the entire home. That's where you tend to kind of get the calls for service and the violations, and then also it was easier to take a look at hotel occupancy taxes. And, and so, you know, there are, there are other types of rentals where a room is being rented, there weren't very many that showed up on our list, but situations where an apartment complex is renting out a unit as a short-term rental. They're seeing that a lot more in Dallas and some of the larger cities where that's starting to happen. But, but really, we're focusing on, you know, those locations that were, showed up as, as renting the entire home. When we investigated hotel occupancy taxes back in 2020, we were, we were using data, it's a little bit difficult to go back, but some of this data, it was kind of a snapshot in time, so you have to keep in mind that if we look at average short-term rental rates per night in January of 2020, it's gonna be different than high season, July 2023. In addition to that, we, we also looked at a national average to come up with, two-hundred-and-thirteen nights annually. So, I'm a little bit more confident in the data and looking at our estimations in 2023. And, you know, this is working backwards a little bit from the, the, the average per night rate that we were able to get in July from Host Compliance, which is $242. And taking a look at the locations that are currently remitting hotel occupancy tax to us to kind of find out about what, what we're looking at, and found a range of a hundred and eight to a hundred and forty-four. And the... Running the report today, we found that the, that, that average is about $218. So, you know, we're looking at a range right now of hotel occupancy tax being anywhere from like a hundred and fifty-four thousand all the way up to two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, just depending on the time of year that we're, we're looking at that average. So, I'd say low end is, is probably about a hundred and fifteen thousand.
We're gonna put you on pause. Liz, can we recess workshop, open the meeting, and then go back to workshop? Chris, can we do it out there? So, because I think you would pre, pre-stack that slide deck, so...
Absolutely.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and do that, and we will get the next set of slides in a minute. We're recessing workshop. It is seven o'clock, we're gonna call this meeting of the Louisville City Council regular session to order. First up on the agenda tonight, we have the invocation by Councilmember Cade.
Y'all please rise. As we are all aware of, today is a solemn day in our country's history, and I'd like to take a moment to remember those that we lost on September eleventh and the subsequent days thereafter, and the ones that we are still losing that are fighting the war of terrorism on our soil and beyond. I ask our Father that in the sense of the solidarity of the country during that time and right after this happened, we're a country of togetherness, of honor, of humanity, and really of respect for all of our first responders and military that put their lives on the line every day. And somehow, in twenty-two years, we've lost that. And it's time that we come together in the name of human decency and loving our neighbor, that we get that back. And I ask Father God to give us, every governing body on this soil, whether it be a committee, library board, the city council, neighborhood association, you practice the art of compromise in respecting your fellow man, regardless of whether you have opposing views. Dear Lord, you please guide us tonight. Our hearts are heavy, our memories run deep, and we ask that you give us the discernment to make the decisions in the choices and the yeses and nos, for the betterment of our community and the betterment of the greater good. Do not let us be run by our own personal agendas and what, what we and only we alone would like to see happen. Let us all remember September twelfth, and what it felt like when you saw your neighbor. And without hesitation, you were able to give them a hug when you came together, because we didn't know what was happening, but we all had a plan. And we didn't run afraid of the what-ifs. We just planned for when. In your name, I ask you to guide us, Lord. Thank you, amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
With that, we are going to reconvene into our workshop session, and Mr. Chris McGinn, Director of Neighborhood Services, is gonna pick up on his report regarding short-term rental analysis.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. There we go. So, just going off this last slide, we're definitely in 2023 seeing an increase in our estimations for hotel occupancy taxes. So, rentals already remitting, remitting hotel occupancy taxes, when we looked at this in 2020, there were only two locations out of the fifty-one. When we looked at this again, July 2023, there were a total of five short-term rentals remitting hotel occupancy tax in the amount of the $12,417. That, those are funds that we have received in the last six months. And what that average daily rate is for, for the remittance, just threw that in there also, just to take a look at, see what your average cost of a hotel is here in Louisville is at $79. So, these are, this is a look at two maps that we put together, this is the one that we saw in 2020, and then also the short-term rental locations that we found in July of 2023. Most of those are concentrated, of course, in residential areas, along the north side of FM 3040 and along Garden Ridge. You'll also notice that in, there, there aren't any short-term rentals found in Castle Hills, and the Castle Hills Master Association, the HOA, has a little bit of more control than, than in order to have those not operate under the requirements of an HOA. We also have a pretty good idea of owners using the, the data from the Denton County Appraisal District, and we found that fifty-six percent of short-term rental owners live in Louisville, and the four percent of the owners live, only four percent of the owners live outside of Texas. We didn't see anything international when we, when we looked at those, those numbers. So, calls for service, I worked with the police department on, on these calls. We looked at just July 2020, 2022 data to July 2023 data here, so I understand there's additional calls that are outside of that, but just looking at, at a year rolling rate. In 2023, we found a total of sixteen calls, and this represents point zero one percent of total calls for the police department. They experienced over a hundred thousand calls for service in those particular, in the entire city. The majority of these calls, speaking with Assistant Chief Clements, were, were noise disturbances, calls for information. You know, we're definitely seeing some of these calls repeated with certain areas, and definitely seeing an increase compared to 2020. One thing I will add is that it took a little bit of work with P D to scrub the information, because we wanted to make sure that the calls that we were looking at were not necessarily going against the, the short-term rental for a call for service for a health issue, or maybe a call that they were seeing something suspicious in the neighborhood. So, so this data was scrubbed to, to make sure that we're getting the right numbers here. Looking at short-term rentals and residential units, back in 2020, when we looked at these numbers, we saw that nine-point-eight percent of short-term rentals had a call for service out of the five, there were five that were identified out of the fifty-one. When we look at the 2023 data, that number's a little bit higher with eleven-point-eight percent of short-term rentals, not, that had a call for service, that's eleven out of the ninety-three. A non-short-term rental, single-family residential parcel is slightly less likely to have a call for service at ten-point-two percent of the data, and that was, keep in mind, after we add Annex Castle Hills with, with a total of twenty-five thousand parcels, the 2020 information were parcels that were in the neighborhood of about twenty to twenty-one thousand. Taking a look at code enforcement violations of the, the ninety-three short-term rentals, we found that fifteen of them had at least one code violation. What I'll say about these violations, that twenty-six of the violations occurred at short-term rentals, which is point three percent of the total violations that code enforcement identified in residential areas. We're seeing complaints, as described earlier, trash, maybe some, some parking violations, unsightly material, which could be your, your, your trash, in, in some of, some of these areas that we've identified. The other thing to keep in mind is, when we look at overlap for calls and service violations, we're really able to identify some of those bad actors. You know, keep in mind that seventy-five percent, almost seventy-five percent of these short-term rentals don't have any calls for service with the police department, don't have any code enforcement violations, but we do see some of those where they overlap. Now the, now the serious slide, so, looking at the survey information for, for the various cities, when we looked at this back in 2020, we found that there were nine cities that did not regulate short-term rentals. Since then, that's dwindled down to, to just a handful, and Louisville falls into that category along with the other five. along with the other five cities that are listed here. Something to keep in mind is that not all cities are the same. And so you have cities like McKenney and Plano. They've been able to work agreements with Airbnb and collect those hotel occupancy taxes upfront as part of an agreement with a short-term rental. From what I understand is that those agreements are going away. So those cities aren't going to be able to do that any longer. So right now, Plano is looking at updating their ordinance and they're currently collecting information from, from the public to kind of come up with a game plan on, on how they're going to be changing their ordinance. The Colony also is looking at updating their ordinance and mirroring it after, after the city of Arlington. Flower Mounds, they have the ability, they have a lot of HOAs. And so because of that, a lot of their HOAs have, have looked at those particular situations and have been able to provide regulation in, in that particular area. With the cities that are listed on the right there, cities with short-term rental restrictions, just have to keep in mind that short-term rentals are kind of an uncharted territory. There's no set of guidelines that really tell us, okay, this is what the majority of cities are doing. What we found were things all over the board. And also the cities that are notated here have some litigation going on in particular areas when they try to restrict short-term rentals in residential areas. Also, what we found were, as was mentioned earlier, that some cities have a program, but they don't have very many locations that are actually licensed. And so there's the question of when you set up a program, how is it enforced, you know, and what are the steps for that? Also, there are five cities that use third-party registration. Basically, they have a company like Host Compliance that is providing a call center to work between the owner and the president that's concerned about an issue. And they're able to forward that information to the police department and code if, if necessary. They also collect hotel occupancy taxes and provide a license process. There are various regulatory approaches that are currently being used by other cities. The, the first one listed there, address specific problems through proactive engagement. That can be sharing information with the police department, working with code enforcement, working with the neighborhood resource officer to let them know that we've identified these properties and that we're having repeat issues and to be able to look specifically into these situations on a case-by-case basis. The next step to require registration and hotel occupancy tax payments. At this point, based on the survey cities, there's only a handful of cities that are not proactively collecting hotel occupancy taxes. This specific change would most likely require an update to our nor, our current ordinance. And there is that option of utilizing a third party to monitor and collect hotel occupancy taxes. Item three, license all short-term rentals and adopt operational requirements. And item four is prohibit short-term rentals except in areas, certain areas of the city. So currently, the city of Arlington, they've been able to create, they have their entertainment district, but what they've done is they've set a distance requirement around their entertainment district to basically say, okay, well, you can have a short, short-term rentals in this particular area. And that's, that's gained some traction. And, and, and they have been able to implement that ordinance and, and move forward. But that basically is limiting short-term rentals just to that particular area of the city. And item five is prohibit short-term rentals altogether. Staff's recommended approach is, again, looking at these properties immediately through proactive engagement. Prior to this, you know, this, this wasn't necessarily information that we passed along to the police department and, and also something that we looked at for, we looked at repeat issues, but, but really working with the owner of the property. You know, code enforcement has that information to, to reach out instead of maybe just sending a violation notice. Also, the, the second piece of information there is require registration and, and hotel occupancy tax payment. This would require updates to the ordinance again and, and hiring that third party to collect. Thirdly, wanted to say that the, the next recommended approach is to really analyze the, the impacts of various city regulatory approaches. I believe, based on our survey, some things are working, some things are not. And, and looking at desired outcomes, one thing that we have to remember is that each city kind of has their, their own ordinance that's tailored for their particular situation. And Lewisville is, is unique in its own way. And, and really looking at, as we move forward, to try to look at regulatory approaches that we include public input hearings where, you know, where residents and, and short-term renters alike can, can voice their concerns and thoughts on this, on this issue.
Mayor and Council, so with that, we really wanted to set the, the analytical framework for what's out there first, so that we're basing everything on facts. And then really wanted to hear from you guys of what direction, what are your desired outcomes based on this data? And then we'll bring back different ways to regulate to try to achieve the outcomes you're wanting to achieve based on that data. So with that, I, I welcome any feedback.
I have a question on these facts, on the calls for service. We have 17 in the course of the 12 month. I'm sorry. Okay. On the course of the last 12 months, there are some on here. I've got seven question marks. Are you ready, Officer Clements? Excuse me, Assistant Chief Clements? I'm going to go page by page. The first one is, on the first page that I have a question about is criminal trespass. So was that the homeowner, the owner of the property trespassing someone from that property?
Yes, there's two incidents, incidents that involve criminal trespass. They're both the property owner. They're both the property owner.
That had, that criminally trespassed people on that property off of it?
That were renting the property, yes.
Right. So, I mean, are we going to use that as calls for service against? That goes contrary to this. If you're going to put a percentage on calls for service and you have responsible homeowner out there that has criminally trespassed twice, I would say those are the ones we want to be the example. Because they're not going to put up with anything, you're out of here. But yet they're on a calls for service and we look at that as negative in the numbers. It's a call for service, but it's a call for service for action from the homeowner is what I'm getting at. Close patrol. Was that from the homeowner? It's on the first page.
I'm going to have to double check on, I'm going to double check on that one. Give me just a second.
While the chief's looking at that, just a thought, I, I get, I get why this, you might want to parse that out if it's the homeowner and they're, they're doing the right thing. Devil's advocate, community doesn't know that, doesn't care. It's in their neighborhood and it's not.
But I know, I want, I want to know that. And because this looks like this is all bad, which, yes, something was happened, they took care of it.
Right.
All right. But yet these numbers go against them.
So I'm going to look at this.
If you're looking at numbers and percentage of call for service.
I'm going to look at this a different way. So Councilman Cade, and I appreciate that input because I, I think you're right. This isn't, this isn't a negative mark against the homeowner, but it's indicative of the types of folks that are coming in.
No, it's indicative of some of them.
No, I, I concur.
Okay.
But I don't want people who criminally trespass coming to my, if I have an STR next to me and they were criminally trespass to other places, I don't want them coming over to me.
No, but they.
So that's, that's, that's my other point is I think you can see this both ways. I think it's not indicative of the homeowner being bad, but I do think it's indicative of that particular property with a tract in element that had to be criminally trespassed twice.
At that particular time?
That's right.
Not in overall, you're not, you, you cannot paint this with one brush.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the point that we're both making is that this, depending on which lens you look at it through, the data's the data, but you can look through it through two different lenses.
Right, but I want to look at the whole picture.
Sure.
And that's why I'm asking these questions right now. The close patrol, was that owner initiated?
No, that was initiated by somebody in the neighborhood.
Okay.
About the Airbnb.
All right. So we have two criminals. And when you have information down here, what is that?
Typically, those calls are for non-criminal activity. I think one of them referred to calling about the Airbnb with the trash in the neighborhood. And so that was classified as an information call. Officer went out, talked to the neighbors about the, the trash and then cleared the call. Because there's no, no criminal activity at the time.
Okay. That's all I have about that. I also have a question about, or our suggestion because I, I'm, we have to have some sort of, we just can't do this fly-by-night thing. We have to be sensible and pragmatic about this. But on the other hand, we're in a ban everything USA. And that is not practical. So my question is, we have talked about parking. We've talked about trash, noise, registration, hotel, hot taxes, traffic. I want to bring something up in the open right here. Nobody has brought up density. In the regulations that we look at, we need to look at density. We have one way in, in two streets, or actually one and a half street, however you want to call this continuous, one way in and one way out with three huge STRs on it that are, what, they said 20 people and one 18 people and another 14 people in another? We need to incorporate some common sense density in some of this stuff. That's a little much for one area. Just my personal opinion.
Appreciate it. Other council?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in here. So can we go back to the, the, the hot tax, please? So I'm going to look at this estimate for, for, let's take the highest one, $226,000. I, I've been out to the neighborhood that have most, most representatives here today. And I'm going to guess it's probably not a third of the, of one house's property value out there. Those are very nice houses. So that, when I think about reasons to have STRs, hot tax doesn't even play any of the equation. These are the biggest investments a lot of us are going to make is in our, is in our home. So I, I, I don't even consider that as part of the equation. I appreciate you bringing it up, but it has no bearing for my thought process. Now I'm going to, I'm going to pause there. I have some other thoughts, I'm supposed to hear what anyone else wants to say.
I don't have anything specific to say other than I am interested in seeing a little bit more of the, the, I appreciate the drilling down into what are these calls for service for? If you look at it, I think this list that I have says that this is 11 separate STRs out of the 93 that have had calls. So that's approximately 12%. So from just a, a principal standpoint, I don't want to punish the 88% because the 12% can't really operate the way that they should and be a good neighbor. But I do think that we have to address the party house issue. I don't know if there's a way that we could, this is a property rights state. So I don't know if there's something that we could do as far as limiting the number of STRs that can be in a specific neighborhood. But the density part that seems like, well, maybe we could do something is how do we limit the number of people that can stay there? Because, you know, I've, I mean, I've gone, I like to travel with my dog. So, and a lot of times we'll end up in an STR with me and my, my husband and my kid and my dog. And we don't get the cops called on us. And, you know, we're, we're good neighbors. And, and I enjoy doing that. So, and I also know that, you know, some of the reasons that have been brought up for the reasons why people rent out some of their places, some of it is a necessity. That's how they make the ends meet. So I don't want to remove that as an option for, for someone who needs an option. But I do want to address, figure out how we can effectively address the people who are not acting in good faith, who are destroying the character of a neighborhood. How do we regulate that? And how, is there a way? I mean, I see one, which I think is probably in the neighborhood that a lot of you are here from. It's got multiple violations. How do we, is there a way that we can say, you've had enough violations, you can't operate for a year? I, I don't know, you know, legally, what we can do and what we can't. I'm just interested in us looking at what are our options for addressing these, these party houses and the people who are not doing this in a way that is friendly to the neighborhood.
I thought, are you talking about the one on the first page? Because that's all been since July 27th, two months.
Yeah, that's, that needs to be addressed. In fact, I would say that needs to be addressed now. But legally, again, I don't know exactly what we can do. Can we say you can't rent out your, your, I don't know. We'd have to talk to legal about that. But I'm definitely interested in, in looking. And I would encourage the neighborhood where this, this residence is located, report it every single time, report it.
And it's never been reported to the platform in which this says that they're on? Because I called on that today. And she's been in business, her name is Nancy, since 2020.
Yeah.
And they said they've not had anything until.
Reported to the city and yes, reported to Airbnb or whoever that is.
I, I would say just because they, they didn't get notice from Airbnb, doesn't mean it wasn't reported. Because I've been on some emails that have definitely been reported and I've tried to jump in and just get some, some context. And I don't know if they don't get back to me because I'm not an owner. But I've copied on these threads and I don't get any response back. So I would, I would, I would just caution, say just because they haven't been contacted by VRBO or it doesn't mean it hadn't been reported. They got to follow their own policies and procedures and perhaps they're not.
So I'll, I'll, I'll jump in really quick. I think when we do things, the best is when we plan them out for a comprehensive, not for these, this one complaint, but we have to think about it holistically for the city. The one thing we, we need to, we need to treat this like anything that we do. We need to plan it out and plot it out thoughtfully and carefully with our residents who are here. We have one, one STR owner here. One of the things that, that we really need to do, I, I, this is something that we can do, is we have our, our Louisville, Texas app. We need to put something for short-term rental complaints so we can track it that way. We need to start getting that together to, to track these complaints somewhere and have them send that to us so we can see it quarterly, so we can know what's going on. I think that the, the tax, the hot tax, what you're talking about, I think it's important because it gets to how do we start regulating and identifying these folks? And then those folks who don't report, those we can take a different action on because they're not in compliance. So I mean, this is, this is not, we're going to fix this overnight, but we have to start today in thinking about how do we put this in a box so that we can start dealing with the, we can separate the good actors from the bad actors? We don't want to make, I mean, I'm sure everyone, if we can make them disappear today, that would be great. We know we don't have that power. We know that we'll get sued and we'll probably lose because Texas is a property rights state. So let's take this. probably lose because Texas is a property rights state. So let's take this carefully, thoughtfully, let's work with our residents in all of our neighborhoods, because I don't think trying to restrict it in one area is gonna work. It's gonna be like a weed, it's gonna pop up in another area. So we need to be comprehensive in our thoughts. We need to, we need our residents, cuz I'm on the email threads too, so I see your email threads, everybody, uh, and I, you guys are tracking it really well. We need to find a way to get the city involved. We need to make sure we're not just using police, we're using code enforcement. And we, when we're writing our ordinances for this, we're writing something that's effective, that'll hold up.
Right.
In the courts, because that's, that's the thing. We only have so much power to state, give it and take it, take it away a lot more. So we wanna make sure whatever we do is permanent and not something that, that's, that's gonna end up being, getting rolled back, is, is kind of what I'm getting at. And I'll end it there.
I'll just, I'll just jump in too. I think, uh, everything's been said, it's all good comments, everything I would probably have said too, but I do, I do think that what you said about the hybrid approach, kind of with what, what works for Louisville, not just what works for all those other cities. It's gotta be what works for Louisville, what works for the residents, what working for, for everybody.
So I do have two more comments here. So see if I can remember them both off the, off my cuff. So one, I, I think we have two problems here. I, I have very little interest in waiting till everything's solved perfectly before we take care of these really bad problem actors. I think these are bifurcated. Anything that we have, any tools that we can bring to bear for these, for these known bad actors, uh, I'd like to do that sooner rather than later and not let that wait for eight months, a year, however long it takes to get everything else up and going. So I would look to, to admin and, and legal to help us figure out how we make that happen. What tools do we have in our system right now that we can actually go out and, and, and knock those down? And I forgot my other point. So I knew that was gonna happen. Yeah, keep talking. Somebody, somebody, somebody riff for a minute so I can think of my other point here.
Nothing to add?
Nothing yet.
Okay.
I would like that, that whoever gets together and is discussing this, it needs to be all sides. Code, police, residents, operators.
Can we go to the last page where you had the, the cities that had enforcement and ones that don't? So I did some research and prepping for this meeting here, and I came across a page that talked about how to pick where you put your short-term rental, and one of the very first items was look for cities that don't have regulation. So I, I was immediately struck by, um, fire ants. So I've heard you can't ever kill a fire ant mound. You can get them to go to your neighbor's yard, but, but, but you're not gonna get it, you're not going to get rid of that mound altogether. And that appears, I'm, I'm speculating here. When we see that uptick that we just had in 16 and 30 days, I can't help but wonder if they're coming to here based on the advice of some of the websites out there, just find cities that have regulation, they're starting to kind of concentrate into us because everybody that's around us has regulations now. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I just wanna, I wanna add to that because I had a, uh, I had a similar thought, cuz I, I thought maybe that was the case, but then I also had a thought where, you know, I, I'm wondering about, you know, just really the state of the economy and how expensive everything has gotten, and really are people exploring their options on how they can age in place and keep their home, but use it, you know, their, their biggest asset to generate some income so that they can afford to stay there? So I don't know if there's any way at all to figure out which of the two, I mean, it's probably a little bit of both. I, I don't know, and, and I don't know if there's a way to find that out or really if it matters, but maybe just an understanding that there's, there's probably some of that going on as well. There's probably, it's probably a little bit of both. Um, so again, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take that tool i- in today's market and with the, the trouble with affordable housing and, and, and people really struggling to, uh, especially our seniors, um, to, to age in place and, and, you know, keep the roof over their head with a limited income. This is an option for them. I don't wanna take it off the table.
I've got a couple of questions and some comments, and then I think we will have given you everything at this point. Um, on the cities with STR restrictions, uh, Mr. McGinn, uh, are those specifically STR regulations, or is it that their ordinance has somehow captured that without really knowing that they were capturing STRs at the time?
My, my understanding, based on the survey information, these are ordinances that are specifically focusing on anything that's being rented less than 30 days.
Okay, cuz, cuz I wanna, one of, one of the things I wanna be clear in the conversation that, that I've been reading and whatnot is, um, there may be wording in municipal regulations, ordinances, that has been superseded by state or federal law. And that doesn't mean we can't have it on the books, it just means it's, it's unenforceable. Um, and so, uh, uh, that's part of the conversation that we have to have up here is, you know, what do our ordinances say? And what was the intent of those ordinances before STRs even existed? Um, so I just, I want, I want our neighbors and friends here to understand that, um, you know, there, there is, there's some legalese we gotta deal with, and a lot of that, I'm not gonna talk about here on the dais simply because then you give somebody who wants to give the municipality a lawsuit, um, they have your, your entire legal strategy because it's been talked about in public. Um, so I just wanna be, be clear on that conversation. We are listening. Um, we appreciate the feedback, keep it coming. Um, it helps, you know, speed up this process from, from our team's perspective, help to give them data, um, that they can use and go and research a lot faster. So thank you for that. Just understand that this is a process. Um, and, and yes, I only see two cities on this list with, um, litigation, um, but this is not a comprehensive list. This is across the country litigation. And we've seen federal, um, uh, federal courts who have come down on the side of, uh, allowing STRs. Uh, they've also given a pretty decent list of things you can do, um, that they believe you can do. But I fully expect to see at some point this go to the Supreme Court, um, as a, as a property rights issue. Um, a few things, um, that I would love to see, uh, in the conversation here is, um, uh, I wanna, I wanna see this in, in the framework of, you know, we, we've kind of learned what we can and can't do with our single-family rental program. Um, I'm hoping that we can find some of the landmines that we got in that and, and apply them, uh, to this program because, you know, we found that there were some things that just, we couldn't take on from a staff perspective. So, you know, if we try to do that again, let's make sure that we don't, we don't overburden staff, or if we're gonna put that much on staff, let's make sure we put the resources there to make it happen. Um, I do think this pushes, um, and it, and it's tough because it cuts both ways. We've got, you know, seniors maybe using this as a, as a way to stay, or, or anybody. I don't even think it's seniors. I think it's anybody looking for a way to, to maybe ride out this term until they can get a better gig or something like that. But I also think that there's a percentage of these that are bought at a really high price point, and they are pricing folks out of affordable housing, um, and the opportunity to get that first home or, or second home, um, you know, they upgraded. Um, so there's, I think there's a, there's a push pull there that we kind of have to be cognizant of. Um, I would also reinforce, um, folks, there are things, tools we have right now today, um, that you can, or empower you to help with the challenge in your neighborhood. And I think the, the, the two tools, one is the Our Louisville app. Um, so if you go onto your smartphone device, there's an app called Our Louisville, um, and you can report things to the city right through that app. Um, the other is the police non-emergency number, um, and you can call that number, um, at any time and, uh, deal with that as, if it's not an emergency, if it's a noise violation, something like that, that's typically best with the non-emergency number. If there's violence and whatnot going on, then yeah, 911. Um, but noise typically is not a 911. Um, but those two tools right now can help us mitigate some of these problem actors, because this is, this is a challenge I see with rental homes, with multifamily properties, and I, and I get these complaints all the time. We, we don't want this, we don't want that. Um, at the end of the day, it's typically the bad actor that owns the property that's the problem. Um, if you've got a really great multifamily product that's managed really well, you don't hear any complaints, nobody complains about it. They don't, it's not an issue. It's when you have a bad actor running the facility. It's when your neighbor is a bad actor and doesn't keep their home up, um, that it becomes a problem. This is, I, I feel in, in that similar vein. Uh, but yeah, we need to put some, some regulation and, and look at those four corners. What I do worry about is that in 18 months, the state's gonna come down on this and decide, no, this is another area that the city shouldn't be regulating. Um, and so then it becomes a, a state issue and they override us. So this would be something that all of you might want to keep an eye on, um, uh, with your state legislators or speak to your state legislators and say, hey, look, we, we either want that, you know, whatever you wanna see, um, or we want that decision to be kept at the local level so we can create a program that is best for our neighbors and for our neighborhood. Um, so just a conversation to have with, with folks out there. Um, I hope that gives you some direction.
Can I, can I drill down on a few more things?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on, on the direction. So one, I think council has given, or at least I think the majority of you have said you wanna make sure this is a collaborative process, so you want more input from the community, um, that for the problem properties, we want immediate action, so we will probably engage with our neighborhood resource officers and our code enforcement to start setting up meetings with those property owners immediately. Um, I've also heard that you want to address the party houses that deal with traffic density, but that we want to do so in an efficient way so that we're not overburdening staff. Um, so you're tasking us with trying to figure out an efficient way to handle those. Um, I, I am not clear if your direction is you want to prohibit necessarily outright, prohibit except in certain districts, those types of things. Do you wanna keep those on the table still and bring that back to you guys as options?
I don't think that we have enough data, other than this, to out and out prohibit. We need to come together. We've gotta work on facts here, absolute facts, and come up with what works for us. Wh- what is sensible and pragmatic and legal, quite frankly, cuz there's still some in the Fifth Circuit Court, there's still some litigation going on in the Texas Supreme Court, and, and so forth. So a knee-jerk reaction gets you nothing but pain in this area. And we've got to really dissect this thing.
I would just say just provide the information for the cities that did that so that we can see that. I don't think that's the ro, that's the road, the path we're gonna go down. I just think for information, not for just ourselves, but for others who say, oh, just get rid of them. They need to know that information. Well, this is what's happened to the cities that have tried that. Um, just, just as information, not for us to search to go down that path, because we just need people to understand, like, yeah, that sounds good, but what, but what's the cost of that? And I know there's some cities that have done that, and what, what that cost them, are they in litigation now? Things like that, just information, not, I don't think that's the path to go, but I think people need to see, know, have all the data.
We have to be, we have to have some common sense.
Okay.
I, I, I wanna know more about what the, what tools we have.
All options are.
Available to us to enforce, um, to, you know, i- is there something that we can do to prohibit a specific residence that's had a certain number of violations or a program, kind of like we have? Um, I don't know if this rolls into the new subbatement program that we talked about a couple weeks ago. Um, I, I don't, I don't know, just what are the tools that we have available to us to address some of the problems?
Yeah, so we can bring that back. Um, Arlington's ordinance does have where a license is provided. If you, if you violate certain things of that license, then they can pull the license for a year. So that is what Arlington does, plus they have the, the limitation in their, uh, entertainment district.
But the violations themselves are very well-vetted, right?
We would have to define that, yes.
But the, the complaints are vetted to make sure that they are legit.
We would need to do that because they're taking away someone's right to operate.
Absolutely, cuz we already had one two months ago that wasn't short-term rental. It was, um, it's professional housing, flight crew housing. Come to find out, that was from a competitor from another city pretending to be somebody here. So that, that's what you're gonna get into on this.
So I wanna weigh in real quick. So yeah, I hope, I hope everybody heard me right. Bifurcate a problem, let's address the ones and the known bad actors as soon as possible with whatever tools that we possibly have, uh, in, in a, in a, in a professional, uh, manner. So let's, let's make sure that happens. Uh, and I'm all for a wider discussion for those that seem to be complying, for those that aren't, aren't noisy on this, on this piece of paper we have right here, and even opening up and doing an invite to some of the short-term rental owners to come in that may not have known about this particular forum, and get everybody in to talk about pros and cons. But I really don't want to wait until that happens to start addressing these, these bad actors right now. I don't think that's knee-jerk. I think they've already shown their colors. Let's, let's just address that.
Uh, yes, I heard that. Um, and then finally, I wanted to clarify on the hotel occupancy tax cuz I think that was confusing as to how you want us to proceed. So with hotel occupancy tax, um, I know this is, I think there's a statement that's not part of this decision, um, but hotel occupancy tax can be collected. There is, um, money that would be left on the table without collecting. And also, if you are competing in other cities, um, if you have other short-term rentals in other cities, they may look at the cost difference as well, and, and realize it's cheaper in Louisville cuz there, you don't have to pay a hotel occupancy tax.
Oh, you should have to pay hotel occupancy tax.
I, I think.
If you go through a platform, you can, they automatically take 7.6% out. Uh, Airbnb does. I don't, I, I, the other platforms I know nothing about. Um, now, I, what is that? Local, state? Are they both the same percentage? If not, then you have an account automatically. If you're operating something like this, you need to take care of your taxes.
I, I, I will just say, I, I feel like, um, it's not a reason to, the, the taxes aren't a reason to keep them, but it is an incentive for people to have more STRs here if we don't charge those taxes. So I think it's important that we do.
Yeah, I think if, if in fact that we're, we're gonna say we're gonna have a hybrid approach and have some, I think that they need to pay the, the hot tax. I mean, I think that's.
Legitimacy has to be the forefront of this. And to me, they're not legitimate if they're not paying their fair share of taxes on money earned. And that, that passes off to the guests. They're the ones that end up paying the tax.
Got what you need? All right, so we look forward to, uh, input from the community. We look forward to you guys being active in the bifurcation effort, um, that we've talked about as well. You have an amazing city staff. They will be here to support you and make sure that you, your, your neighborhood functions the way it's supposed to. Um, with that, we will go ahead and move on to our public hearings. Item C1, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a funeral home on approximately .99 acres out of the Jay Sutton survey abstract number 115 zone general business district located at 697 South Simmons Freeway, as requested by Ricardo Carrio, Carrio Funeral Homes on behalf of Carrio Funeral Directors Incorporated, the property owner, case number 23-03-4-SUP. Carrio Funeral Homes plans to occupy the existing building without expansion, requiring only compliance with parking standards on the IH 35E corridor overlay district. The applicant desires to keep the existing pole sign. Since special use permit regulations were adopted in 2013, none have been allowed, uh, permanent pole sign. All developments that contain existing pole signs and the required SUP approval removed the existing pole sign and utilized either monument signs or building signs. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing with the condition to remove the pole sign on August 15th, 2023. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance with the condition that the existing pole sign be removed. We do have Mr. Richard Lukey available, our planning director. Um, and then I also have Santos T. Martinez, uh, from, um, Rio Rancho, New Mexico, uh, speaking in support. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Santos Martinez, 2489 Camino Plata Loop Northeast, Rio Rancho, New Mexico, 87144, representing the property owner and applicant in this request. Um, we've agreed with most of the conditions that have been brought before you. We're gonna repair, replace the screening fence that exists between our property and the residential neighborhoods to the west. Uh, we're going to provide additional trees above what's required by code. Uh, there was a question at P&amp;Z by some of our neighbors about our lighting. They will be in compliance with your standards that they don't bleed over into adjacent properties. Uh, we're gonna fully sprinkle our building and our remodel. All of our parking fits on site, and there's no conflict with residential traffic as all traffic must exit onto the service road and go south. Um, we, we would like, as this is our first location in your city of Louisville, to, uh, maintain our sign for a period of time. Uh, we do have locations in Fort Worth, Grand Prairie, Tyler, and Dallas. Uh, it was our understanding initially, but there was some conflict with some of that information that there was some textile construction planned for this area, but that's not an issue. What we would like to do is at least keep our sign for a short time for folks to understand where we're located. Uh, we've heard some folks who say, well, you just use your phone and you're on Google. I'd like to point out two things about the Google map. Um, one of the other things I do is I'm the planning director for the Village of Angel Fire, New Mexico, and I will tell you that Google's maps are not immediate in the updates. Uh, and second, if they're wrong, good luck in trying to get it fixed. Uh, we have a property owner who is up the hill from the transfer station and around in a cul-de-sac, but Google says that that's the property where you take your trash. And it's not, and they actually drive by the transfer station, but everybody's looking at their phone. It's unfortunate, most people are doing that, and they don't remember how to read a MapsGo. And so this is our time to come into your city. We we welcome the opportunity to do so. We ask for our our sign to be maintained, if for a short period of time, to get us acknowledged in your city. I would like to point out, one of the other things we we noted at Plan Commission is that, and we weren't this detailed, but on the west side of I-35, south into the north of our property, you've got pole signs for VW, Cracker Barrel, Whataburger. There's a Chevron and a Shell station. Of all those signs, the VW sign actually looks like it has masonry support columns and masonry around, and then it's got its emblem on the side. We'd be willing to look at some consideration just to remove the actual pole, maybe clad it. But we would like some time for folks to be comfortable where we are in our location. Our monument sign is only visible on the southbound service road. The building sign is only visible along the east facade facing Stemmons. You can't see this property with the concrete barriers north or southbound because they are on the service road exit as well. So that's the reason for our request is to keep the pole sign for a short period of time at your discretion. Stand for any questions you may have. Again, recommend, we follow staff's recommendations brought before you tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I I have a question for the applicant. What 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 would you define as a short period of time?
12 months. I I know in some conversations there was a timeline. If there was construction going on, it was contingent and triggered to that. But something in terms of months upon the issuance of a CO, I think would be reasonable for for folks to be comfortable that this is where we are. They're not going around a loop in Fox, off the Fox exit, trying to locate us.
I have a question. Did you bring this up to P and Z when they approved this with the condition that the existing pole sign be removed?
Yes, ma'am. We actually looked at either cladding the sign or shielding the sign pole with an additional tree. We were already putting an addition, one additional tree that's required. There was actually a conversation by your plant commissioners if this property was in a sign overlay, if there were any other provisions in the overlay that prohibited the pole sign. But yes, we did bring that up at P and Z. I believe the conversations were more with staff about the actual overlays for this property, but we had requested some relief to keep the sign up. It's a little more detailed with the request. We're providing you with some of the information we heard at P and Z.
Questions, comments?
And do you have somebody to, if we would would agree to that, do you have somebody that you use, that you would have under contract to take this sign down?
I don't know that we've talked to a contractor about the removal of the sign at this point.
We, we're talking about an SUP versus the general, I mean, in a general business district. The existing commercial that he has named, our general business, and we're talking a special use permit, that the background of this says the P and Z unanimously approved seven to zero, okay? But they did it with a condition. And to go back on that condition, I just don't agree with. I mean, we have an overlay. We have a process. You have a special use permit. Once he gets it, it's gotten. It's going to have to take transplant of kidneys and lungs to get it undone. And that came to us with this condition attached.
So to clarify, this is an existing sign.
Right.
That's correct.
That you want to keep. So you're not talking about putting up a new sign and leaving it up for a year and then taking it down?
We'd like to reface the existing sign with our our funeral home name. There's, I believe, a health clinic that was there before or is vacant there now. Their sign still remains. So yes, it's the existing sign that's on the property. We just want to reface. We're not asking for a brand new sign of a new location, just using the existing one that's there. So there is a pole sign right on the north edge of our property today.
And then you're talking about putting in, at the same time, putting in a monument sign now?
Yes, I believe that's part of, that's part of what staff has recommended is that we move our our monument sign more closer to our drive approach. It's actually a smaller sign, is my understanding of what would be typically allowed in your general business zoning districts. But yes, we are putting a monument sign. Again, that that sign's going to only be visible if you're on the southbound service road from 35 because that's where it's going to be placed.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, can I take y'all onto executive session for attorney consultation?
We will take a short break for attorney-client consultation.
It's.
Reference, yeah, where's my, where's my property reference?
55, section 55, 551.07.
All right, we're going to be back in session. Counsel, item C1, public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion, a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously to close the public hearing. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Let us get back to it. Change. Okay. I move to approve the ordinance with the condition that the existing pole sign be removed as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a funeral home on approximately 0.99 acres out of the Jay Sutton survey abstract number 1115, located at 697 South Simmons Freeway and Zone General Business District, providing for repealer severability penalty and an effective date declaring emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item 2, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from local commercial LC District to planned development multifamily three, PD MF three, District and five, associated alternative standards related to landscaping along streets, landscaping between different uses, landscape strip encroachments, parking and driveway spacings on eight, 2.84 acres out of the Loop Bourgeois Survey abstract number 52, located on the northeast corner of East Round Grove Road, FM 3040 and South Uger Lane, as requested by Maxwell Fisher of Zone Dev, the applicant on behalf of Havenshire Investments LP, the property owner, case 23023PZ. The subject property is currently a vacant commercial tract. The applicant requests a zone change to PD MF three to construct a four-story affordable multifamily residential development using low income housing tax credits. The city council approved a resolution of support for the 9% tax credit project on February 20, 2023. The following alternative standards are requested. A, to reduce the required landscaping along South Uger Lane from 30 feet to five feet and to allow the tree plantings in parking lot tree islands. To allow a variable width landscape strip along the eastern boundary of the site. To allow a fire lane and parking stalls to encroach in the 30-foot landscape strip along East Grove Road, East Round Grove Road. To allow a 1.6 per unit parking rate in lieu of the required two per unit parking rate and to allow a driveway spacing of 110 feet in lieu of the required 250 feet. Planning and zoning commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing on August 15, 2023. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance and five associated alternative standards as set forth in the captions above. We do have Richard Lutke available for questions, and we do have a presentation by our applicant, Maxwell Fisher. The applicant and Avis Shashan, the developer. Mr. Fisher?
So Maxwell Fisher with Zone Dev, 2502 Grandview Drive, Richardson, Texas, 75080. I do have a presentation to share. Avis Shashan is also with us, and if Mayor, if it's okay with you, she will conclude the presentation, and we'll both be available to answer any questions at the end. We are excited to present this project to you. This particular property is, has remained undeveloped. It has some challenges. It's sort of an awkward sized piece, but the biggest challenge is the fact it doesn't have basically an entrance into the site. And so a lot of retailers would would not want to develop the site because it it is too shallow and it doesn't allow an entrance, direct entrance into the property. It's just an in-between size and and just not small enough to where someone would want to take a chance on it. So we think it's a great residential infill site. Here's the proposal. We're proposing a four-story development. It's 90 units. It's a single building. It's it's well amenitized. We're also proposing a right turn lane that would serve the overall public on onto Uger, not just our own development. We've restricted our access, direct access only on Round Grove. That would be exit only, and then our main access would be on Uger. Be happy to go through more of the details of the development. I know staff did a great job going through the details earlier. We are asking for a few variances or alternative standards. The request, I'll highlight a couple of them. The site is fairly shallow, or I should say, the width is, it's narrow with respect to Round Grove. And so along Uger, we we are proposing some canopy trees in our parking lot area. Staff worked with this on enhanced materials to offset that that variance along there. We also have a parking variance. We're asking to reduce our our parking down, something that better aligns with our actual demand. This next chart shows you what we did is we we looked at our peak hour at some of our existing facilities. The peak hour is 2:00 AM on a Tuesday, basically during the week, weekday, at 2:00 AM in the morning. And so we did it on a, in a per bedroom basis. And conservatively speaking, you know, our number of cars per bed ranged from 0.63 up to 0.68. And so if you take a conservative number of 0.7 cars per bed, that's the most parking that would ever be occupied on the property. And so our number of beds is 171. We won't ever have any more than 120 cars on the property at any one time. And we're proposing 144. So we'll have an overage of about 25 cars. If we ever have any kind of event in our clubhouse area, we will be able to to govern how many people would be at that event. Not to mention, not everyone's home in the evenings. So that would sort of offset any sort of event that would be held in terms of, in terms of parking. Here's an actual rendering of the development from the intersection. It's well articulated, both vertically and horizontally. Staff worked with this on the exterior materials, as I mentioned. We think it'd be a great addition and improve the corridor in this area. We think the proposal aligns with the comprehensive plan really well. It basically adds to the diverse housing. It addresses the housing affordability. And then most importantly, one of the comprehensive plan elements is it create a cohesive and connected, connected group of neighborhood nonprofit and business leaders who help keep neighborhoods thriving in the future. Palladium will actually be, will own this property. They're legally required to own the property for 45 years at a minimum. So this is not a developer that's going to be developing and flipping this property. They're going to be here for 45 years. They have a management company that's local. You're not, you're not only getting a great development, but you're also getting a first class management company. And Avis will will elaborate on that in a bit. I will turn it over to Avis for the back half of our presentation and be available for questions, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore, members of the Lewisville City Council. My name is Avis Shashan. I'm the Executive Director of Real Estate Development with Palladium USA, 13455 Noel Road, Dallas, Texas, 75240. So I would like to give you a little overview about Palladium, the group, and Palladium USA. Palladium has been around for over 150 years. We operate in six different countries. We have a history of owning, developing, and managing properties. Our US operations have been in existence since the early 1990s. You can see where throughout the state of Texas, we've developed about 6,000 units in the state of Texas itself. We do high-end luxury mixed income housing, independent senior living. We've also undone luxury, marker rate high-rise housing as well. We do pride ourselves with exceptional architecture and quality, and you will see that in our pictures. We definitely are active participants in the community, and we look to partner as well. Maxwell mentioned that we self-manage, which sets us apart from a lot of other developers who do third-party property management, which gives us an an edge because we don't, we feel like we manage our properties better than anyone else can. So just so you can see a variety of our developments, I mentioned independent senior living, mixed income. And then you can see our flagship property that has been in our portfolio for over 20 years in Dallas, Verona by Palladium. So this is a picture of our interior, very, you can see nice granite countertops, stainless steel appliance package, modern lighting, nice high ceilings. So again, very high-end quality developments. Again, these are actual pictures of our properties. This is in Fort Worth. You can see our children's playroom that's outfitted with video consoles, different children's activities. You can see the tiles on the floor. They actually are interactive. They change colors when people walk on them. I think adults enjoy that more than the kids do. You can see the state-of-the-art fitness center, business lab. Our clubhouse is outfitted with high-speed Wi-Fi, which is a very nice asset for our residents as well. So while I live at a Palladium property, we do provide our resources for our residents. You can see, we've started putting in fully stocked pantries. We source it ourselves. We work with nonprofits. We work with churches to do so as well, which is a nice feature for our residents, especially when they can't get out during winter storm Uri. It was a nice feature to have when roads were closed for our residents to use. You can see it looks like a mini convenience store with dry goods, cleaning supplies, things of that nature. We also host resident events. We provide financial literacy classes. We recently partnered with Regions, one of our equity and lender providers, to do financial literacy training. And then we'll do health and wellness events and scholarship programs. But not only that, this is just on site. We're also, like I said, active in the community, and we love to be active in the city of Lewisville. So we've done supply drives in partnership with Dallas Police Department. We've hosted toy drives on our properties. Just recently, we did an event in the city of Dallas called Unity in the Community. And then we've done a Champions and Legends event, which highlighted high school state champions throughout the Metroplex at UNT Dallas. And we provided scholarships. You can see a $1,000 scholarship to a graduating senior. Actually, that was one of the South Oak Cliff State Champion students. So we have conducted some community outreach and support for this deal in conjunction with our resolution of support, working with staff. And I want to say staff has been fantastic, from Richard and his team and Mayor Shill and the Neighborhood Services team for getting us a list of surrounding parcels, property owners. It was mentioned that we do have the resolution of support that was provided for our tax credit application. I will say, we are happy to state that we are in award position, and we received a commitment notice. And one of the items that we need to solidify that is the zoning change. And then you can see some letters of support that we've received from the community as well. So just in summary, as Maxwell mentioned, we do feel like we align with your comprehensive plan and your 2025 vision update. It definitely is a nice infill community that will help bolster the retail along Round Grove. Obviously, I will say, we're a highly reputable developer, especially in the Metroplex. And again, we're a long-term operator, and we definitely want to be a good community partner and neighbor. City Council did approve the resolution of support, and then we have unanimous approval, Planning and Zoning Commission, and staff recommends approval as well. So we actually humbly request your approval tonight, Mayor and counsel, for our development on Round Grove in Lewisville. Thank you, and I'm available for questions as well.
I have a question. Were you going to say something?
Going to, going to ask you if you had any questions.
Okay, well, I do. And I I think my questions, I I sent them through Richard earlier today just so you could be prepared. And could, we flipped to the slide that's got the the parking for similar developments. Just want to talk through that for a minute because I will, I, I'm the person that's always talking about parking. So because I do believe it's everybody's right to park at their home, have a place to park. So that's always kind of one of my things. I want to make sure that I feel comfortable that what we're approving is not creating a long-term parking problem. uh, a long-term parking problem. Um, so uh, I I'll just kind of, I appreciate that you sent this over to me earlier today and I had a chance to take a look at some of these similar developments and um, really got a feel for uh, which of these are are really uh, comparable to to what we're talking about here. Because some of them, um, some of them, it looks like have a a different ratio of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. Um, and then some of them are in different communities, they're kind of, uh, you know, th- some are more car-centric, some are more urban. So I I do think this first one, the one in Farmersville, is actually a really, really great um, comparison to look at because it looks like that probably has about the same percentage of one, two, or three-bedroom units as as this one that y'all are proposing does. And uh, so when I look at that and um, compare, and that's in a very, I would call that even more car-centric than than where we are. Um, so with the, if if the point six-eight cars per bedroom is working there, that makes me feel a lot more comfortable, but I do have one clarifying question for you that I want to make sure. Is that a hundred percent occupied, or is that a partial occupation of that property?
No, the property is a hundred percent occupied.
That makes me feel so much better, I'm glad you said that. So um, with that, uh, I was looking at, okay, this, the Farmersville is a great, i- it's a great comparison. Um, so, and that's doing well at a hundred percent with the point six-eight. And um, what this is saying is that, you know, what what y'all are proposing or what you think is going to happen is the point seven. But actually, with the number of parking spots that you're providing, it's actually more like a point eight-five if I did my Aggie math correctly. So that makes me feel even more comfortable that we're 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 uh, we're going to be okay with the parking. Um, so I I'm good with that. And then there was one more question that I had regarding, there was a little bit of discrepancy between the exhibit, there was the graphic that showed the the distance between the northern property line, you're shaking your head because you know what I'm gonna say.
Yes.
Like around ninety feet and then the text says seventy-five feet.
Yes.
If we could kind of, I don't want to lock you in because I know that you got a design and, you know, I I don't want you to have to lock into a specific number. But if we could come a little bit
Yeah.
Closer between the two so that it doesn't, it doesn't give an appearance of trying to be misleading.
Yes, we started with seventy-five when we were working with staff on um, solidifying the site plan. Um, and just never updated it, so we're happy to go to eighty, eighty or so um, to better align with what we're showing graphically. We have to have our detention on the north end and parking, um, so those are sort of things that would limit us from putting the building much closer anyway. So we're happy to to do that in the beginning.
Yeah, and I don't, and I'm not sure, I know, Richard, you and I talked about earlier today, maybe possibly needing to add a stipulation to the to the um, to the motion, I'm not quite sure that we need to do that, it's really not talking about moving the building from where it is.
Correct, no, we're just talking about.
About cleaning up some of the texts, which I don't think we need to get into.
The regulations are part of the ordinance, so it sets the setback, which is carved in stone. So you could make a a condition that the setback for the uh, to the northern boundary be ch- uh, amended from seventy-five feet to eighty or eighty-five, whichever number you choose. And then that way, the PD would be approved with that number.
Are you comfortable with eighty?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? All right, Council, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Our motion is second. Council, please vote. Public hearing is closed unanimously, Council, entertain a motion.
I think it's probably gonna have to be me since I think I just volunteered myself.
You pretty much did, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to approve the ordinance and five associated alternative standards with the condition that the setback um, requirement be um, set at eighty feet. Is that good?
I've got a motion in a second.
Second.
The attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately two-point-eight-four acres of land legally described as track as a tract of land out of the Luke Bourgeois survey, abstract number fifty-two, located on the northeast corner of FM thirty-fourty West Round Grove Lane and South Euclid Lane from local commercial district zone to plan zoning to planned development multifamily three district zoning. Correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item three, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from office district to local commercial district to plan develop and from office district and local commu- commercial district to planned development estate townhouse district and five associated alternative standards related to lot lines, driveways, screening between different uses, screening along public streets and left-turn lane length on two-point-seven-seven acres of land legally described as Gary R. Levitz Community Hospital Edition Lot One and a portion of Lot Two Block A located on the front portion of seventeen-twenty Edmonds Lane as requested by Inova Designs Group, the applicant on behalf of B A N T A P LLC, the property owner. Case twenty-two dash oh-eight dash four dash PZ. The property located at seventeen-twenty Edmonds Lane is currently vacant at the front and has a commercial building at the rear of the property. The applicant is proposing a sixteen-lot single-family residential detached development for the front portion of the property. Following five alternative standards are requested, to allow non-radio lot lines along street curvature, to allow a driveway to be more than forty-five percent of the lot width and the required front yard, to waive the requirement for a screening wall between single-family residential and commercial along the western portion of the development, to allow wood fence in lieu of a masonry fence adjacent to the public right-of-way, and to allow a reduced left-turn lane at the intersection. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, seven to nothing of the zone change and five alternative standards on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance and five associated alternative standards is set forth in the caption above. Richard Lukey is available for questions, and I do have uh, Mr. Mustafa, and forgive me, um, Jawad Walla. And if you wouldn't mind, state your name and address for the record, sir, and you're here to speak in support.
Hi, good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Mustafa Jawad Walla. And uh, I'm in, I'm the builder in charge of uh, developing this housing community on seventeen-twenty South Edmonds. Our goal is to present and develop a housing community that not only is on par, but exceeds the expectations of the city. And we've worked with the staff over the past few months uh, to agree and uh, accommodate all the all the requirements uh, that would be for housing, uh, for single-family housing. And uh, I've personally done some research and there's a lack of uh, new construction in the area. Uh, most of, uh, in in the mid-tier range, and my goal is to bridge that gap. Most of the new constructions were in the upper seven-hundreds. And uh, our goal is to have something in the mid-tier on the uh, half-a-million-dollar range and lower. Apparently, that's become the new affordable standard. So uh, we want to develop and we want to keep in mind that we're gonna, I also want to uh, address any other concerns of the ci- of the neighbors or either anybody else who has any concerns about the project. And I can assure be, assure you that we'll be setting high standards for the development of the housing community.
Council, any questions?
You know I'm gonna have a question. But I I'm gonna wait for Richard, we're gonna, I want to talk about the fences and then I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, so um, well, I'll start with my first one. So I understand this is a, this is a complicated piece of property, there's a lot of stuff going on. My question, just looking at the layout, I understand that there's like a kind of a a a standard front setback that we're trying to hold here. Um, but because of the way the property is kind of situated and I can see you're lining the street up with that um, median break. Um, you know, the, i- it's a little, it's a little off-center. And so because of the drastic difference, it it's almost like the setback on the the properties on the, I guess that would be the northwest side of the property. There, the front of the ho- those houses is almost at the back of the other houses. Do you, do you see what I'm saying? Am I explaining that right? I'm not. The on lots six, seven and eight, the, because of, you know, those are set back further because of the the cul-de-sac, right? So the front part of lot six, of the house on lot six is almost, it begins almost where the house on lot five ends. My question was just for lot one, two, three, four and five, can we just increase those those front setbacks a little bit to where they're not, these other lots aren't looking in their backyards? I I had difficulty opening these on my iPad as well, so I pulled it up on, in Granicus here.
Okay, which one did, are you pulling up right now, let's look at the same one.
I'm in, I'm in Exhibit B.
Okay, Attachment B?
Yes.
I just have a letter on that.
Richard, are you able to pull it up?
I'm gonna give it a try, uh, bear with me one moment.
I think if we could see the graphic, you would know exactly what I'm saying.
Well, I need to see the graphic, Thomas, we've been having problems with all kinds of attachments in Granicus tonight. Okay, here we go. Where'd you get it? I couldn't get it. Okay. Now.
So are you, are you basically saying you want to line the houses up with the, so with the ones that are on the cul-de-sac?
Have to be completely lined up, but maybe not such a drastic difference.
Excuse me, sorry, if you don't mind, uh, I'm in, I'm Luis Perez, I'm with the design company that's doing the master plan.
Okay.
I was looking at the site plan right now, and regarding your questions for lot one, two, three and four, it wouldn't be an issue to push those houses back in order for lots one through five to line up. Um, now, if it was between lot five and six, then that would be an issue because then we're eating up a lot of the front yard and not leaving enough of the backyard. But for lots one through four and even five, it wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, even if like with, if lot five could like scoot up, maybe, I don't know, I I can't really tell, maybe five or ten feet and then the rest of them kind of came up, the one, lots one through five would have bigger front yards.
Yeah.
But lot six through eight wouldn't be looking into the back. There we go, now we got it up, yeah, looking into the back, into their backyard.
Yeah, there you go, yeah, so the difference is about ten to twelve feet uh, between lot four and five.
And they, I'm not saying they have to be even, um, but maybe just a little bit, with split the difference.
Yeah, we could do maybe like a three-foot difference, starting from lot five to lot one, and that way you don't see into the backyard that much.
Yeah, that would be fine, too.
That's fine. Like I said, I'm Luis Perez, I'm here for any other questions that you might have.
Okay, and then the other question I had, help me understand what's happening. Is there, so I know there's gonna be a wood fence on um, for lot eight and nine. There's gonna be a wood fence on the side of those to kind of buffer their backyards from the commercial development, right? But what happens, is there any type of fencing where the cul-de-sac is, or are you just gonna be able to see? Is there any screening there between the cul-de-sac and the parking lot?
Right, so between lot nine and lot eight, we are gonna be screening the cul-de-sac as well with the fence. Uh, of course, it won't be in a circle, it'll be more of a hexagonal place, because the idea is that you can't see the commercial lot at all from the residential properties.
Okay, that's helpful. I couldn't, I couldn't see it with my mind's eye.
No, yeah, yeah.
And we're also talking about taking the proposed masonry fence from the fire lane and putting that on Edmonds and then putting a wood fence along the fire lane.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so uh, we did speak to the planners about that with staff and we agreed to that change, it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
Man, you get to make that motion.
So I don't think we need to, I I mean, I I, the the thing about the the front setbacks, I didn't, what is this? This is a uh, is this an SUP?
It it's a planned development.
It's a planned development, so does this lock in those front setbacks?
Yes.
It does, so then we would have to make, we would have to um, say that we want, the, we would have to put a condition on moving those back.
Yes, to, uh, on the setback standards, that they be more gradual on that north side.
Okay, um, we could, we could just, could we be that uh, general about it and say a more gradual setback from? What is that, east to west?
The lot range where the setbacks will be increased to to create a more gradual s- uh, s- uh, transition on the setback going into the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
I think we have to close the public hearing first.
Yeah, I gotta close this.
Yeah, but she's the only one that's spoken so far, so I'm gonna give everybody else an opportunity.
Sorry.
I I think she's done well.
So uh, I move to uh, close the public hearing.
All right, I got a motion to close.
Second.
First and a second, Council, if you please vote.
I'm gonna try my hardest here.
The public hearing has passed unanimously, I will entertain a motion to approve.
All right. Um, I'm not sure if what I just said changes what was given to me earlier. I don't think that changes any of the conditions that we talked about.
Well, you'd have to add the.
I'll have to add it, but I don't have to amend any of this.
Not the alternative.
Okay, all right, so here we go. I move to approve the ordinance and associated alternative standards A through C and E as set forth in the administrative comments and replace alternative standard D with a new alternative standard, which will allow wood fence in lieu of a masonry screening wall along the northern boundary of the development. And I would also add a condition that the setback, uh, that we have a more gradual setback uh, on the north, yeah, thank you, for lots one through five. Second. Is that, is that, does that cover it, Richard, is, or is there?
I think that will suffice.
Okay, thank you, thank goodness.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Council, oh, I'm sorry, city coun- city attorney, so different council.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately two-point-seven-seven acres of land legally described as Gary R. Levitz Community Hospital Edition, Community Hospital Edition Lot One and a portion of Lot Two Block A located on the front portion of seventeen-twenty Edmonds Lane from office district and local commercial district zoning to planned development estate townhouse district zoning. Correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes six to nothing.
I'd like to give you all just a quick little trivia about this, the reason why it was hospital district. It's because way back in the early seventies and so forth, they were actually building the hospital there before they built it on thirty-five and Main. So the that, that developer actually stopped, they had one building, and then they decided that the better place for it was at thirty-five and Main.
That makes a lot more sense, because we were kind of confused as to why that zoning was even there.
It's very, very strange, yes, that shows that I'm old as dirt here.
Appreciate, appreciate.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Item four, public hearing, consideration of the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget. In accordance with state law and the city charter of In accordance with state law and the city charter, a public hearing is being held on the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 budget, available on the city's website, in the city secretary's office, and at the library. To provide an opportunity for resident comment. The proposed budget includes changes made by city council at the budget workshop held on August 12th. An agenda item to adopt the budget is also on tonight's city council meeting. The public hearing and vote on the tax rate will be held at the council meeting on September 18th, 2023. It's recommended that the city council conduct the public hearing. Counsel, I do not have any speaker cards. Is there any, any comment from counsel?
Just, uh, to thank the staff for their hard work to, to get us here, you know, we get here and it seems like, oh, it's overnight, but we know that it's a long, it's a long time.
Long, long.
With Dave, Dave and his team, and every, and all the other, uh, directors, uh, great job. And of course Gina.
Great job. All.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
With that, I move to close the public hearing.
Second, I have a motion and a second, counsel, please vote. It is, uh, passed unanimously. And with that, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, just for bio breaks and whatnot.
Bio break.
All right.
Expect to be back here at, uh, a quarter till. All right, thank you all for your patience, we are back. And at, uh, 7:47. Next up is visitor citizens forum, speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed up to five minutes for testimony, speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I have a few cards here, requests to appear before the city council, first up, I have Mr. Kenneth Shepherd. Mr. Shepherd, if you could state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Absolutely. My name is Kenneth Shepherd, and I'm, I reside in Louisville at 1319 Bobbing Drive, 75067, near Old Orchard and Bel Air. Reason that I'm here, I'm here with, uh, seniors helping seniors, uh, I do a lot of volunteer work. I, um, I deacon at New Beginnings Church here in Louisville. Uh, I volunteer for the food pantry, which is, uh, part of the city. I also volunteer for, uh, Love Thy Neighbor, which is a clothing pantry that my wife runs out of our church. And I myself, I'm a Medicare advisor. And my travels and volunteering with people, I run into a lot of seniors who are on Medicare. I'm on, I'm on Medicare as well, I'm 70. But I run into a lot of people on Medicare, and they have a lot of questions. And I don't know that if anything exists in the city already. Where they could get their questions answered. I, I went to the city's Thrive. At Valley and Corporate a year ago, offered to volunteer, never heard from anybody. Forty days ago, I emailed the city secretary. Did the same thing, put it in an email, and never heard from anybody. So, uh. Seniors Helping Seniors asked me if I would come here with them tonight, and I said, sure, I'd be glad to. But I don't know if we have anything that exists in the city, but I'd like to see if, uh, something could be done where maybe. One night out of the week, um, well, one night out of, out of, uh, out of the week, say maybe a Wednesday night, through Parks and Recreation. Teach a class on Medicare, I'm a Medicare expert. I have 38 state licenses, I've done it for 10 years, and. For most companies that I've worked for, I've been employed as a subject matter expert, I have to know all of the rules and the regulations about Medicare. Uh, but I think that it's necessary, we have 20,000 plus. Seniors in our 112,000 people here, roughly 20%. Are of us are on Medicare, so. I'd like to just see if, uh, we could do something like that, uh. Maybe I'd get an answer, uh, finally, uh, after trying to do this for about a year.
Well, we'll have somebody from staff reach out to you and, and see what, what, what's possible.
Okay.
Appreciate your time, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Rebecca Rector? Ms. Rector was here to speak, uh, regarding short-term rentals, uh, I think she probably had her questions answered earlier. Uh, Judy Collins? And Ms. Collins, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Judy Collins, I live at 415 South Garden Ridge. Uh, the Evergreen Apartments, and I've been there for eight years. And I represent a large group of seniors from Evergreen at Louisville. And we just wanna express our gratitude. Uh, for the rental assistance given to our community. And many other Louisville senior living communities. And we are especially grateful for the dedication and concern of United Way, CCA, City of Louisville, Mayor Gilmore. His council persons, Louisville City Managers Office, and their staff. Through your efforts, we are able to continue to reside in our communities. Because of this caring on the part of those just mentioned, many seniors who struggle with paying rent. This month have had this burden lifted off their shoulders by all of you present tonight. And we want to thank you again for your generosity and helping us keep a roof over our head. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Sandy Basil?
My name's Sandy Basil, I live at 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard, um, Louisville, in the Evergreen, um, apartment complex. And I, again, I just wanna say. Wanted to say thank you for listening to this group of seniors, citizens who are struggling due to constant rent increases. Because you did take us seriously, we did receive limited financial help for several months toward our monthly rent increase. I really do appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Starnes?
My name is Margaret Starnes. My residence is 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard, Louisville, Texas, in the Evergreen Apartments. I'm here to thank each and every one of you that had a hand in. Providing for us rental assistance. It was very, very needed. Very needed, thank you again.
Thank you. Nancy Sansom?
My name, my name is Nancy Sansom. Um, I currently live at a 415 South, uh, Garden Ridge Boulevard. And I have resided at Evergreen at Louisville for five years. I wanna thank you all for, uh, let, allowing us, our group, our grassroots movement, um, to address you tonight, and we will be here every month, so count on us. We also want to, um. Mention that we have many residents that came tonight wearing the blue shirts. With our logo and with seniors helping seniors. In the back, and if we had everyone here, we'd fill up this room. But many have health problems. Our thanks to all here tonight for helping Louisville seniors to meet their costly rent, uh, in August and September of this year. Without your help, many would be facing eviction. And, um, every age, uh, young, excuse me, younger aged seniors are many are able to work. Now, the problem is you've got seniors older than that, 80 and 90 years old. That are trying to hold a job down and cannot do it. So that's the crisis they're in. That is why we are so grateful for the city council, the city managers, the city manager staff, and everyone else that's here tonight, we really thank you. It has made a big difference in our lives, in being able to maintain our, um, residence. Since many seniors have, um, difficulty operating the computer, many of us grew up with a typewriter. And so we've had, had a long learning curve in order to catch up with everybody else. So I wanna thank very much United Way, I wanna thank the City of Louisville City Managers. And, um, Olivia, um, Williams is the, uh, United Way, uh, Director of Education. They brought, believe it or not, tutors into our site and computers. So we had seniors there that had never used a computer, that could get on the site. And we were sure grateful for that. And many of our residents, probably around 50 perc, 50 of them were helped, but with this, uh, United Way and CCA, um, funding this year. Now beginning our fall season, as we are, um, a two-year, um, veterans at being advocates for seniors, and. We are continuing to grow exponentially. Um, we'll be at the, uh, Thrive. Uh, Senior Health Expo this Saturday, the 20th, uh, excuse me, 16th, from 10 to 2. We are grateful for our, our donor, uh, Bobby Mitchell, uh, District Manager, or District Commissioner. She was very generous and helped pay for our, our vendor tables, so we will be there, and everybody's welcome. Uh, there'll be many, many other vendors, too. So in closing, we are grateful, uh, for all the help that, uh, we've been given. And that you've provided us an opportunity, um, to help seniors facing these life challenges. So we are trying to keep a roof over our heads, and also seniors helping seniors, and I wanna thank you all for your time and patience, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Willie Peterson?
Mr. Mayor, I'm Willie Peterson. Since November 2020, I have lived, resided. At 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard. Here in Louisville. On behalf of my fellow residents. We officially now call ourselves Louisville Seniors. Living Challenges. I fill out a uniform tonight, but I have my T-shirt on. You'll notice several of us are wearing T-shirts proclaiming seniors helping seniors. Well, tonight, Mr. Mayor, we are here to say thank you. It's not the first time I have said. We want to say thank you, thank you to friends of seniors. I wish to say thank you to some courageous individuals and agencies for their advocacy for seniors. Thank you Mayor Gilmore for plus two years of welcoming us to stand in this space. But you did more than that, beside giving us a voice. We received helpful suggestions from you and others on how to effectively be heard. Folks like United Way and CCA reached out to Louisville seniors. Who were fearful. Of eviction because of skyrocketing rents. I'm a free marketer. And I never supported rent controls. As my mother would do, I don't wanna really do that, I, my answer was rent subsidies. But my mother would say, I told you. Soon we were hearing Denton County officials. Saying, we know. How to create pathways to where the rent subsidies are. We thank the Office of Senior, of Senator Parker. County Commissioner Bobby Mitchell. We say thank you to Reverend Joe Fields and New Beginnings Church. They came here to advocate for Louisville seniors. They came to our facility and encouraged us and offered us assistance. And they've given us generous funds. To help our cause. Thank you Mayor Pro Temp, and thank you City Commissioner's Office. Thank you to local agencies, public and private, thank you. But the task is not completed. The task of living, of senior living challenges. Is only just been identified. Winter is probably 60 days away, and seniors will need your advocacy all the more. My Christian values require me to say thank you. Jesus once healed 10 lepers. And only one came back, say thank you, and he complained and asked, didn't I heal 10, where are the nine? I have been here several times asking you to use your positions of influence on behalf of seniors. Thank you, you've been doing just that, you've been telling us where the, where the money is, where the goal is. Privacy issues prevent me from. Disclosing accurate numbers of people receiving utility and rent assistance. But in South Dallas, where I grew up, we would describe the number as a bunch of people. I'm told 40% of seniors. Are at or below poverty income level. In closing, I have two requests. First, we need somebody to provide free and safe transportation from Evergreen. Louisville, at Louisville to City Hall. Somebody could get hurt or worse. With old folks like me driving down here in the dark. I would not recommend you ride with me, I can't see at night. But my fellow Louisville seniors are going to show up. If they have to walk. Please help. Please get us some transportation. Second, we need expertise, and we needed it yesterday. Technology is killing us seniors. Create for us teams of technology volunteers, like happened when. We had the projects at the library where people were being assisted in getting into the system, applying for resources that are available. If you're not technically a student, you won't get in on the resources. Volunteers who will come to us and make us old folks look good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Priscilla Kornick?
My name is Priscilla Kornigay. I live at 1136 Whispering Trail Circle in Louisville. I kinda, I've been kinda thrown into this, which I had my own concerns about how the city was being ran. And. I didn't wanna bore you with a lot of pictures that I took, but I did take a lot of them. I've been here 30 years. Been married 30. I've been here 30 years, been married 35 years, bought two homes in Lewisville, paid for both of them. And in the 30 years of being here, I've never seen Lewisville look so ran down. Trash is everywhere. Lines in the roads have disappeared. I've seen people veer off into each other because they didn't know that was a double lane. Lights are not working in the city. You walk around, you drive around the city at night. Some lights are on, some are off. The trees are intertwined with the, the wires. Crime, speeding. We have children, we have grandchildren. We're afraid. Somebody bought their kid a Mustang that they weren't ready for. They come barreling down Corporate Drive by the Thrive. I live across from there. And if, I've talked to the sergeant before, and I've expressed if we don't fix that speeding, we're going to make the news. We're getting ready to make the news. The kids are riding their bicycles. We're pulling them like, get out the way. I've snatched a few kids out of the way just recently on a Sunday morning because these people are driving 60, 70 miles per hour on a 35 mile zone. I live on the corner. I don't want your car in my house. Crime. It's gotten worse. I've never really had to watch my back in Lewisville because it was always a safe city. I find myself looking over my shoulder a whole lot more. I think when you look at just driving down some of the roads, and you know you've been here 30 years, and you're driving down these roads, and they don't look the same. They look like I'm somewhere else. I went to the Colony because my son said, "Hey, let's go to the Colony, Mom. I heard they're doing really great things there." I was a little jealous. I didn't want to see it, but I went anyway. On my way back into Lewisville, it was like a culture shock. The buildings are ran down. Many of them are abandoned. No upkeep, trash on the, trash is everywhere in Lewisville. I'm looking forward to the weather cooling down so I can just help clean up because I'm embarrassed to invite people to my city now. It doesn't look great. We came in from 121, leaving the Colony. If you're going to do business in Lewisville, I'm a business owner. I manufacture for over 50 stores. And if I don't show up and do what they want me to do when they, when they're paying me, I'm not going to be doing business with them. So if people want to come, and I hear all the approvals tonight, if people want to come to Lewisville, they want to do business, you got to keep your yard up. I keep my yard up. You can't throw your trash all around the corners. You can't expect someone else to come and clean up your mess. If you're going to do business, keep your business up. A lot of the businesses that have closed down, if you would allow me, I'd take a bat and break all of them down. They're so terrible. And people are now hanging out. They're vaping, they're smoking, they're drinking, they're loud. Because you know why? It's a vacant building. Nobody owns this anymore. So they think it's free to go hang out and beg you for money. And then you got to look over your shoulder just in case they don't come and try to hit you up just because you say no. And you got people hanging all around Lewisville. The roads are, I mean, the potholes, the uneven lanes, the missing lane, everything. Never seen it like this before. So now I'm, neighbors have asked me, "Can you start this thing off? We'll back you up." We are concerned. We're not happy. These are my neighbors. It kind of started out as a casual conversation. And then they started looking at me like, "We can do something about this. We're not going to take this. They're bullying us." And it's all online. People are very upset. And so I found myself like, you know, I've been feeling that way, but I didn't want to just, because all I hear now is, "It's going to take time. It doesn't happen overnight." But it's been 10 years. So how much longer? How much longer do we have to wait? We pay our taxes. We'll abide by the rules. How much longer? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That is the last of the public comments. Next up, I have a consent agenda. Councilmember Jones, I think you have to step away for consent. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, were there any requests for removal?
No, sir, there's sure were.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve consent agenda as it, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Counsel, please vote. Consent agenda passes 5 to nothing. Could have Councilmember Jones back in, please. Item F, regular hearing. Consideration ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023, 2024 operating budget. Proposed operating budget for all funds has been prepared by staff and reviewed by the city council. Approval of this ordinance adopts an operating budget for these funds beginning in October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024. A draft budget document is available for public review at the city secretary's office, the library, and on the city website. It's recommended that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. And counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion as second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City of, of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, adopting and approving a budget for the City of Lewisville, Texas for the year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, providing for an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously, 6 to nothing. Item G, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Jones, you mind if we start with you tonight?
No reports, sir.
All right. Councilmember Cade? Councilmember Meredith?
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. Story Smart, How to Outline Your Novel for Adults and Teens, Thursday, September 12, 6:30 to 7:30. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Morning Book Buzz, Active Adult Book Club for Adults, Wednesday, September 13, 10 to 11 a.m. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Ways to Win Academically for Teens Age 13 to 18, Thursday, September 14, 6:30 to 7:30. Registration is required at the Bennett Program Room. And Teeny Tiny Art Show Art Drop Off for Teens Age 13 to 18, Saturday, September 16 through Saturday, September 23, all day. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, I have a few items from the, for the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, there are Texas, Texas Tunes with Stephanie Urbina Jones is this, is on September 15, presented by the City of Lewisville. And as always, every Friday night, the acoustic jam session presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. And some activity, the activities going on, Garden Secrets Class, Seed Saving and Storage. Well, that's already passed. Pilates in the Plaza, presented by Pilates in the City on Saturdays. Yoga in the Plaza, presented by Lu Anju Studios every Thursday. And Tai Chi in the Plaza by Lowell Johnson on Saturdays. And several exhibitions going on right now. Reflections of the West, an exhibition of Robert de León, presented by the City of Lewisville, runs through September 30. Deep in the Heart of Texas, art by Cross Timbers Artist Guild, presented by City of Lewisville, also running through September 30. And small work, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, running through September 16. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney, City Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say that last Thursday on September 7, we had, we had our annual boards and commissions appreciation. So I want to thank the mayor and council for attending, city management and directors for attending, as well as Stephen for taking photos and all that good stuff. And I would be remiss if I did not thank Jennifer and Bernadette for planning the event. They did a wonderful job, and I appreciate everybody's support and attendance.
It's a great time. Thank you, sir. Richard?
No report, Mayor.
Rochelle?
Mayor, City Council, I just want to give a heads up of some correspondence that you're going to be receiving in the next week. We're actually kicking off our audit process for fiscal year 2023. With that is a risk assessment that is done every year. These are letters that you've seen in the past or questions that ask about related parties' interest and fraud risk. So I didn't want you to be surprised. That's going to be coming in the mail. There's going to be a cover letter included with the questionnaire that provides more directions and timing for when they need to be returned and who we need to return them to. And I'm available if there's any questions after you receive those questionnaires.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember?
Two quick things. So we have our downtown tour. This is Saturday, 11:00 noon. Please join. Lots of great things to see downtown Lewisville if you haven't been before. If you have, come down. It's always changing. And then, real quick, I wanted to call out the Lewisville Playhouse. So we went to a play there Friday, I guess. Fantastic. We saw Moon Over Buffalo. If you haven't been before, that's a great little venue to go see some live, some live play. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Green?
No report.
City Manager?
No report, sir.
Just want to remind everybody that we got some bull riding coming on Saturday. So it should be a great time. And just in case anybody wants to know, the, the lake today is at 81% full. It's at 517.84. We're running around 492,000 acre feet. So lake's in decent shape, but please continue to conserve water, and hopefully we'll get a little bit more of that rain that we've been seeing. With that, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Pending Litigation, Meredith Moat versus Mark McNeil in the City of Lewisville, Case Number 423-CV-00117, United States District Court, Eastern District of Texas, Sherman Division. Item 2, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Legal Issues Related to 3.11 of the Lewisville City Charter. Item 3, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Legal Issues Related to the Fair Housing Act, 42 U.S.C., Section 3601, some sort of Latin something. Item 4, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. And Item 6, Section 551.074, Personnel, City Manager Claire Powell, City Secretary Thomas Harris III, and City Attorney Elizabeth Plaster. We will now move into closed session.
We are going to reconvene. Counsel, is there any action to be taken? Councilmember Meredith?
Yes. I move to approve the mediated settlement negotiated by the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool in Meredith Moat versus City of Lewisville, Civil Action Number 423-CV-117, to resolve all claims pursuant to the terms and accomplished through the settlement and dismissal documents approved by the city's defense counsel and the city attorney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Councilmember Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we increase the salary for the city manager to 12% and the city attorney to 3%.
By.
By, I'm sorry. Increase by 12% for the city manager and increase by 3% for the city attorney.
All right. Counsel, any seconds?
Second.
Catch that? All right, we have a motion as second. If you would, please vote.
Aye.
I have ayes. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. As there is no further action to be taken at tonight's council meeting, we are adjourned. 11:55 p.m. No, it is not midnight. It's 11:55.
Oh, what am I?